Welcome to the Select Board meeting for December 19, 2022. Call the order at 6:35 PM. First item of business tonight will be the sale of surplus real property at 18 Pleasant Street and 17 Moore Street to Miller's Falls Realty. So while Brian's getting his stuff together, this has been the longstanding back and forth waiting for all the deeds to get finalized and everything ready and cleared and meters read. And so it's all, it's all ready to go and everybody's ready to close, finally get this off our docket and move forward with the, allow the builder renovate, purchase and renovate those two buildings.
Open to kick off in the spring, I assume?
Yes.
Excellent. Any questions?
I have no questions. I'm ready to do motion number one.
Yes, sir. Please.
Sure, let's go for it.
Motion move to deem 18 Pleasant Street, parcel ID 4-5-73 as surplus real property and for the Select Board to sell the real property as authorized with unanimous approval of Article 19 of the annual town meeting held on May 12, 2021 to Miller's Falls Realty, LLC of 34 A. Adam, East Main Street, Miller's Falls, Mass. 01349, having submitted a highly advantageous proposal through the request for proposal process in the amount of 10,000 and to execute the deed and all necessary documents on behalf of the Town of Irving to complete the sale.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion number two, move to deem 17 Moore Street, parcel ID 4-5-16 as surplus real property and for the Select Board to sell the real property as authorized with the unanimous approval of Article 11 of the special town meeting held on March 5, 2022 to Miller's Falls Realty, LLC of 34 A. Adam, East Main Street, Miller's Falls, Mass. 01349, having submitted a highly advantageous proposal through the request for proposal process in the amount of 5,000 and to execute the deed and all necessary documents on behalf of the Town of Irving to complete the sale.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the last motion, move that the Select Board authorize Scott Bastrush to execute the owner's affidavit on behalf of the Select Board for the closings of 18 Pleasant Street and 17 Moore Street, Irving to Miller's Falls Realty, LLC.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll get that out of the way now. So I have the, here, actually, Bill, if you want to sign, there's a spot for each of us on the back of that.
We'll get it done now for you so you can get out of here.
Brian, this one?
That's the affidavit.
That's just, right?
Yeah.
There you are. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, but we're not, we're doing this for Wednesday, right?
Correct that one, you can do Wednesday.
I'll do that Wednesday. You need an idea and you're good.
Just the two, yeah. Two. 18 Pleasant and 17 Moore, right?
Yeah. Okay. You want just one signature too?
Two, two, yep. Do you need something? Oh. Those are for you to sign. You need us, could you bring it? If he's, is he done? Is he done with another? Would you mind bringing it around like this? Otherwise we'll, just don't want us to rip our mics off. Thank you.
She's signing the next two. That one, next page.
Bet you're in the office Wednesday, right? Okay, I'll do this one Wednesday. I'm just like with that. She's going to fill the rest of that out.
Yeah, you just go to sign it and she'll do it.
Yep, okay. It's on that side, right?
The top gray section right there.
This one?
Yeah, I believe so.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's, you have everything you need? You have everything you need?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for taking care of that. We will move on to our second item of business tonight, which is Mass in Motion Grant for Irving Age Friendly Work Presentation. Welcome, Meg and Rachel?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm Meg.
Meg, okay.
I'm one of the two public health nurses for Irving with the Cooperative Public Health Service along with Lisa White from the FERCOG. And Rachel and I are here tonight to let you know about this, the status of the Mass in Motion and Age Friendly Initiative. So thank you so much for your time. I'm going to start with a brief overview, review of what the Age and Dementia Friendly Initiative is, and Rachel will talk about what Mass in Motion is. We'll hit the highlights of some of the survey data that was done about the needs of the area before we conclude.
I just want to mention, for folks in the audience, if you want handouts, there are handouts available. For all of the stuff that we're going to be discussing, there are copies on the table.
Thank you.
I'm having trouble advancing the slides.
Okay, hang on.
Okay.
Try again.
All right. There we go, yes. So the Age Friendly Movement started with the World Health Organization as a worldwide movement about 20 years ago and is run by the AARP here in the US. The dementia-friendly movement started separately about the same time. It's now included, rolled into the Age Friendly Work, and it's run in Massachusetts by the Councils on Aging, but they are worked on together as a unit. And the movement for these livable communities is in response to a rapidly aging worldwide population, which is happening quite quickly here in Massachusetts and even faster in Franklin County. By 2030, 34% of Franklin County is going to be age 65 or older. And around the same time, there are going to be more people over 65 than under 18 for the first time in history. So in response to this, LifePath, which is the lead agency for the Age and Dementia Friendly Movement locally initiated the dementia, Age and Dementia Friendly Franklin County and North Quab. And it kicked off in 2020. A steering committee was formed. The towns were talked to, notified of the process, and either, and signed on, and you guys officially signed on as a member of the Age and Dementia Friendly Initiative pretty early on. Earlier this year, we did a region-wide needs assessment. From that needs assessment, priorities will be decided, and then the region will proceed with, with something based on those priorities. So that process is now in, in place. Each community is going to have a chance to review the data. This evening is the first step, a look at that data. And you can either create your own action plan or contribute to the region-wide one as far as age and dementia friendly. Mass in Motion is a separate initiative, and Rachel will talk more about it in a minute, but it is locally done to support the Age and Dementia Friendly Movement here. And I just want to quickly review that the AARP uses eight domains of livability to organize the age-friendly work. They, three are related to the built environment, transportation and roads, housing, and outdoor spaces and public buildings. The other five are related to the social environment, communication, civic and social participation, health services and community support, and social inclusion and respect. So I'm going to let Rachel talk about Mass in Motion.
Great, thank you. So as Meg mentioned, Mass in Motion is a statewide movement that is supported by the Department of Public Health. Franklin County has been a Mass in Motion community for the past 10 years. I was, have been the Mass in Motion Coordinator for all of that time. At the time, there were, I think, 29 different communities involved in Mass in Motion. And some of the things that we worked on in Franklin County under Mass in Motion were supporting complete streets efforts and planning, supporting the development of the regional age-friendly work, and working on farm-to-institution efforts, so creating ways for institutional food services, especially public schools, to be able to access more local farm produce. We got into a lot of questions of distribution and storage. So Mass in Motion was re-procured last year for a new round of funding, and they decided that they wanted to have fewer communities at higher rates of funding. And so we applied, and Irving joined us in that effort. I don't know if you remember signing on about a year ago. And we were very surprised to get the funding because I really wasn't sure that we would get it. We learned that we had received the funding in May, and then the funding started in July. And so now we're one of, I think, 10 Mass in Motion communities. Every community is doing something different. The, what we decided to apply for in Franklin County was to be able to support towns individually, which, with their age and dementia-friendly planning to complement the regional effort. So we decided that was an intentional move because we knew that towns would want to do some of their own planning in addition to participating with the regional effort, and we wanted to provide support for that. So that is what we are funded to do. A little bit more about Mass in Motion. Mass in Motion seeks to change community conditions by looking at long-term solutions to issues by identifying the root causes. So we don't just focus on the surface issues, but we really try to identify what are the root causes, what are the things underlying these issues. Another thing that Mass in Motion does is we use a leading with race framework, which means that we understand that race is a social construct, and yet the concept of race has contributed to a lot of inequities in our country and in our communities. And so we need to understand how that works. Even in communities that are predominantly white, that is a big, that really drives a lot of inequity. And so as we learn to understand it, we can really address inequities. And Mass in Motion encourages, in any planning effort, to ask the following racial justice reframing questions, which are who benefits? Who is harmed? Who influences? Who decides? And what are the unintended consequences? And so those are just great questions, if you think about it, to look at any policy or any program to really address, like, is this, is this serving people in an equitable way, or is it leaving some folks out? And Mass in Motion is very focused on the concept of health equity, which really understands how people's health is determined by many, many factors, and not just their access to health care, but the environment that they live in, they, how welcomed they feel in their community, their ability to have social interactions, all of the things that Meg mentioned are things that, that come into, to combine, to form our, how healthy we are. And so when there are inequities, that can really influence people's health. So I'll give it back to Meg for the local data, and then I'll talk a little bit more about the specifics of Mass in Motion.
Okay, so as we go through this data, I am going to focus really on what the difference here in Irving is from the regional. The info is displayed on each slide with the region-wide first in black, and then Irving's data is second in red in parentheses. There are, there were only two required questions. What town are you from and how old are you? So the percentages don't always add up to 100% because some people just didn't answer the question. Many of the questions were also check all that apply. So bear that in mind as we go through as well. So the demographics of who responded, we had about 2,000 respondents region-wide. We were hoping for 1,000, so we felt pretty good about getting double. Here in Irving, there were 45 people who responded to the survey. And I think you guys have a population of around 1,800, is that right? So, you know, it's not the whole town, and bear that in mind as well as, as, as we go through this. So about 62% of the respondents in Irving were female and 27% male, a little bit lower female and higher male than, than region-wide. Regionally, 34% of the respondents live alone. Here, 27% live alone, and 51% live with a spouse or partner. The bulk of the people who responded to the survey were between the ages of 60 and 79, split about half and half between 60 and 69 and 70 and 79. Here in Irving, that's a little higher at 82% than the 70% region-wide. Notably, very few people 80 or over responded to the survey here, only 2%. And 16% of the respondents were aged 50 to 59 or a caregiver of someone. So moving into the built environment, as I go through this, I'm, I'm trying hard not to draw conclusions or prioritize needs for you. The steering committee for the region-wide initiative will be forming some groups to look at the data and prioritize those needs, as well as the Mass in Motion towns each, forming a town group. So we're really just going to take a quick look at it. And due to time and the fact that you guys have a really long agenda tonight, I really am just going to highlight some of the major differences. You have all the slides, you can go back and, and look at it again on your own. Feel free to reach out if you have questions or discussion topics or anything. So, starting with housing, a larger percentage of respondents here in Irving said they own their own home, 61% versus 47% regionally. And a larger percentage have lived in town for over 15 years than regionally, 74% versus 67%. Notably, 100% of the people who answered this survey said it's important to them to stay here in Irving as they age, which is up a little from the regional of 90%. Slightly better access noted to home repair and lawn care services than the region. And we asked about motivations people might see for changing their housing in the future, even though everyone wants to stay here. And a larger percentage here cited the cost of maintaining their current home, the need for a different type of housing. Very few cited need for better access to transportation. The other numbers were all similar to the region-wide. In transportation, generally, people noted that they were a little more independent with their transportation. 98% of people drive themselves versus 86% regionally. Fewer people have others drive them, 12% here versus 24% regionally. And fewer people reported walking or biking. And that was specifically asked about getting to places, medical care, social events, et cetera, not just for recreation. Most people, half people reported no public transit in the area or it's too hard to get to. Not too surprising. Oops. I did something wrong with the slide deck. I'm sorry. We're talking about...
You had done a new page.
Oh, no. I knew it. That top, okay. Well, we're talking about outdoor spaces and buildings where... Okay, yep, I'm in a slightly different order than the slide deck. So double the number of people in Irving reported that they don't, either don't have access or don't know if they have access to outdoor or don't know if they have access to outdoor spaces that are accessible to them and have adequate benches. That was a dramatically different number than the region. More report good traffic signs and pedestrian crossings, almost 80% here versus the 60% regionally. And more people reported always feeling safe in their home or community. That question was, do you feel safe in your home and community? Always, sometimes, or never? So 91% of the people in Irving said always versus 81% regionally, which is great. Let us not forget the 9% that don't, but...
Good question for the comments on the right in blue. Are those from Irving specific, or are those regional?
They are regional comments. They're either from open-ended questions on the survey, or from some of the focus groups that were done to try to talk to people who might not have responded to the survey itself.
Thank you.
So talking about social environments, again, I want to, let's see. Most categories for health services and community supports were very similar response rate to the region, except fewer respondents here receive caregiving support. That may reflect the fact that only 2% of the respondents were 80 or older. I would expect older people to need more caregiving support than younger. And home health care access is also continues to be a problem, not just here, but regionally and nationally. For other health services, overall, slightly better access to services and professionals in all the categories, healthcare professionals, et cetera, except you report much better access to wellness programs. 62% in Irving report that versus 43% regionally. It's terrible to make assumptions about causative factors, but I'm guessing it's due at least in part to the senior center programs that you have here. To look at community supports, and specifically village or neighbor-to-neighbor support groups, I don't know if you guys have a formal one here in Irving. I don't think you're part of a national chapter, neighbor-to-neighbor group, but of the people who might be interested in volunteering, 44% of the Irving respondents are interested, and 34% are interested in receiving support, which is notable. And a higher percentage than regionally report finding good access to easy-to-find information about what services are available, so that's good. Telehealth can sum up similar numbers for the region. Generally, people have used, three-quarters of people have used it at least once. Most people had a good experience, though fewer people in Irving, only 53%. Most would use it again, and most would prefer to see their provider in person. Social participation, slightly more respondents live with other people here in Irving than regionally. More people interact with others, and slightly more feel well-supported. And however, almost a quarter are unsure or don't have someone they can call anytime or day of night. I like to highlight that question, because it's interesting to note who feels they have someone they can call at any point, day or night. Communication and information, we asked about top sources of information. Very similar numbers for friends, newspapers as sources, but look at the senior center as a source of information. It's 70% in Irving versus 52% regionally. And the town newsletter, goodness, 80% versus 27% in the region. So pat yourselves on the back, and I'll stand up and give you a round of applause, so...
We'll have to put fun in that in our budget meeting, I guess.
And civic participation and employment, generally, respondents in Irving reflected a somewhat higher level of engagement than regionally. A higher proportion said they had good or excellent opportunities for volunteering and civic engagement and access to info about the town. I want to highlight the financial security questions. People were asked if they worried about their finances. Fewer people in Irving say that financial security is their biggest problem, or that they worry about getting by each month, 18% compared to 25% regionally. But there's still a bunch of people for whom that's a huge worry. And almost half of the respondents feel okay now financially, but worry about the future. Respect and social inclusion, generally, rates of satisfaction with respect and social inclusion were good. And higher, a higher number of respondents feel they have conveniently located services and cultural activities and events, affordable events, and access to fitness and outdoor recreation. This also speaks really highly, I think, of the efforts of your senior center director, Paula Betters, and your library programs, so... And then my favorite question, how do you rate your town as a place to age? Regionally, it was about half and half. 53% said good or excellent. In Irving, 78% said it was a good or excellent place to age, and 23% said it was fair or It's great to focus on the positive. I also want to point out that I don't think of this question as a reflection on the worth of a town, or of the region, or even a reflection of how much people like living where they live. I think it's an indicator of how much work can be done to make places more age and dementia-friendly, and that this work is very much needed and appreciated. So I'm going to turn it back over to Rachel.
Thank you.
Bring it in the homestretch?
Yes, I'll bring it home. So I'd like to talk about the timeline, and I also want to refer to the memorandum of understanding, the second page, which has the scope of work. So the timeline, so this is specifically for the Mass in Motion work. The timeline starts with this meeting, the meeting with the select board to let you know what's happening, and to present the memorandum of understanding. And then we're asking each town to form a work group to work on this planning process with us. So it's really up to the town how many people you have and who is on it. I'll give you a few suggestions, maybe six to eight people, and a diverse group of people. It would be great to have people with different types of lived experience, lived experience of disability, for example, lived experience of food insecurity, other things like that where they can bring their lived experience to the group. The purpose of the group is to review the regional data, so go a little bit deeper in the data that Meg is presenting tonight, and also to answer some questions about things that didn't appear in the data. So we didn't ask any questions about food security or food access in the regional assessment, unfortunately. So we'd like to get a sense of what's going on with that, and there are a couple of other questions to answer. And also for the work group to look at the regional data and say, well, is this accurate? Or is, you know, did a lot of people get left out of this survey? And so to kind of complete that data. There will be a required, or at least we're asking each town to send at least two people to a health equity training that will happen in February. I should have the date by the end of the week, and there will also be a snow date just in case. This will be an in-person, full-day training in Greenfield with excellent breakfast and lunch. And the purpose of having a health equity training with all the towns together is to go over the concept of what health equity is and use some data collected locally to illustrate that. So really using local data, not Boston data, but local data relevant to our rural communities. And we're very excited that one of the trainers for this is Kirby Leacy, who used to work for the Office of Rural Health. She's now the Mass in Motion Director, and she grew up in the North Quabin. She's a farmer. She understands the issues that rural communities face. So we are not bringing someone in from Boston to... Well, the other trainer is from Boston, but he's great. Kirby is, really understands the needs of rural communities, so I think she'll be an exciting trainer to have. So then each work group, after examining their own data and identifying some of the most compelling issues in the community, and looking at the underlying causes of those issues, will decide on some strategies, or a strategy, or a few strategies, depending on the town, to implement. Some of these strategies might be really inexpensive. Some of them might cost more. If there are things that require applying for funding, we'll help you look for sources of funding to apply for. There is some money attached to this memorandum of understanding, so each town may have up to $4,230 to support this planning process through June 30th. There will be about the same amount of money available again next year, which can be used for implementation. We're very flexible about how this money is used to support planning. So if you need to compensate people for their time spent on the planning group, or organizing a planning group, or their time attending this full-day training, that is perfectly fine. You may use it for food for meetings, materials, if you need to rent space, you know, whatever the need of the town is to support this planning process. I think there are a couple of exceptions listed in the MOU, but really, it's quite flexible. And the idea is to identify some strategies that are specific to the town. If this town decides they would like to team up with another town, that's also fine, you know, as the process rolls out, all of those things can be discussed. That's about it. Again, those reframing questions, the racial justice reframing questions that I mentioned, they're up on the screen. Those are really central to this work, to really think about how to make decisions equitably. And that's about it. I'm happy to take your questions. I know you have a lot of other stuff on the agenda, but if there's things that you think of and you'd like to reach out to me or to Meg, we are happy to answer your questions. And if you, you know, if you need guidance on forming the work group, also happy to do that.
So just to sum up, you know, I did list a few examples of what age-friendly work could look like via each of the eight domains, and I wanted to point out that it does not need to be expensive work. The whole point of the Age and Dementia Friendly Initiative and the Mass in Motion support for it is to have the discussion, to start thinking about the issues that come with a rapidly aging population. I want to underscore that it's a good thing that's happening. We're living healthier and longer lives, and this is an opportunity to plan into the future. There are no strings attached about what exactly you have to do, besides attend the health equity training.
Right.
And I also want to underscore the fact that you've got basically two things happening layered here. You've got the Age and Dementia Friendly Communities Movement, which is a program managed by LifePath in conjunction with FERCOG here, and then you've got Mass in Motion with Rachel and the 11 towns of the 30 in this, in the regional movement, supporting additional town-specific work. So there are work groups regionally, if anyone really wants to jump into this, as well as the work groups that you are being asked to do as part of the Mass in Motion. So just be aware of that layering, because it can get a little confusing as we talk about work groups and the regional...
There's regional work groups and town...
And there's specific town work groups. But bear in mind, we are working very closely with each other. Rachel and Carol and I meet regularly to discuss everything.
I'm on the regional steering committee.
Yep. So any questions?
I have one. You mentioned two to attend the training.
Yeah.
Should they be members of the work group?
Ideally, yes.
Okay.
And at least two. You can send more if you would like to.
Okay. For breakfast and lunch.
It will be an excellent...
Incentives.
That's a very important component of Mass in Motion work.
Good food, yes.
Anything else? We very much appreciate your time.
Very much, thank you.
We know you have a long night ahead of you.
Thank you for the concise but thorough presentation. And we have all the data too, so...
Yes, yes.
And your contact.
Yep, yeah.
Anything before the...
Nothing tonight, but I know that the select board will need to vote on the MOU.
I realize that tonight is not the night to do it, but as soon as you can, it would be great.
Okay. We... Well, I have no qualms.
I have actually read the MOU. I don't have an issue with that. I didn't go through the presentation, because I knew we were going to see that tonight, so I skipped down to the MO...
Could use some time.
You know, to read the document. Yeah, yeah. Put my time where it was necessary. I did not have any concerns with it, moving forward with it.
Yeah, I didn't have any concerns. Okay. Would one of you like to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion that we sign and enter into a memorandum of understanding, binding between Town of Irving and the Franklin Regional Council of Governments for Mass in Motion Age-Friendly Planning. Do you want the dollar amounts for the grant funding, 4320, do you think you need it in there?
No. Only if it's important to you.
Yeah. There you go. That's your motion then.
Okay. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Well, thank you very much.
We'll get that going on.
Okay. And again, that health equity training, there's no fee for that. Anybody can come.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, take care. Good luck with the rest of the night.
Thank you. That's in our pile. I'm not going to worry about that right now. We'll get to it later.
Yep.
With that, at 7:13, I'll call the joint meeting with the Finance Committee to order for review of the FY '24 budget requests, public safety, public works, general government, and discussion of dental and vision plan options. Thank you for your patience, the stuffed agenda tonight, so apologies for starting a little late. First, we got a couple topics we'll clear out of the way first. Discussion around dental and vision insurance plan options. So some of these tonight, we're going to try to intermingle a variety of different things. Some of them are financial, some aren't, as we have the different staff members up here presenting, just in essence of time, to try to streamline it. Jennifer, could you come join us? So just kind of opened it up. Jennifer approached us a meeting or two ago about considering other options for dental and vision as we look at the renewal period, which I think is June 30.
Yes, beginning of fiscal year.
Fiscal year, yeah. So it was time, if we wanted to consider it, just to put that out there through our existing contracts. So we did, and Jennifer's done some work and research and has some stuff to talk us through.
Yes, I kind of went into depth with PowerPoint. I know this is kind of just like a beginning discussion, but I figured I got some rates and some plans to come back to you all with. Thank you.
Left, right, that forwards it, don't touch that.
Okay, yeah, that was a detonator from last time.
It's a time bomb, don't hit that button.
So the reasons for exploring new dental plans, I've been approached by several people in the town, from the school side and from general town hall and other departments. So I went ahead and reached out to everybody who has benefited and asked what they thought of our current plan, and if they would be interested in new plans. And so this is the employee testimonies that we had come in return. I believe you all have these slides. I can read them if you like.
We do, yep.
So the majority of people made some suggestions, and I think there was only maybe one or two comments that said they're very happy with what they have, and they don't want to move forward with anything else. Some people had mentioned Delta Dental, some people had mentioned the Blue Cross Blue Shield, and those are two of the proposals that I had reached out to. All right, so the first one was Aflac Dental. This is the first person to get back to us. Their plans, he kind of got plans that were very similar to what we currently have, not as much coverage. He did add in the orthodontics. I think that was a big key portion that I think the employees had asked for and would like. So those are the rates. The only thing with Aflac, though, is they do not cover retirees. So they do have an age limit, so that was kind of a huge downfall for them. Again, I kind of just kind of screenshotted some of the plans and what they cover. I won't go into super details. Their deductibles were very similar to the other two plans that I had reached out about. And then this is just kind of some comments regarding the orthodontic benefits. So it's not as a high coverage as the other two plans are. It's $750 per year. Each eligible person can have a maximum lifetime of $1,500, so they cap it at that. And the second one was from Maya. It's Dental Blue Freedom. It's through the Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan. Again, so these two plans, the Maya and also the Delta... Again, so these two plans, the Maya and also the Delta, I got four different plans that were basically identical. So when you look at the rates, you can kind of see where they're at, at the very last slide. So again, just kind of some, some specifics on what they cover. So here were the rates. So there was four different plans. So basically the coverage is like your basic 100% as your preventative. Your second tier is your basic fillings. And then your 50% is kind of like the major care. So root canals and all of that kind of fun stuff. Your deductibles are 50 and 150, calendar year maximum 1,500 with rollover. All, both the plans had rollover, the Maya, you know, the Dental Blue Freedom and also the Delta Dental as well, with $1,500, the lowest plan with the orthodontics, and then going all the way up to the highest plan, which has a 100, 150 split with a $2,000 calendar year maximum and a rollover of $2,000 for dental. So the plans, the highest plan in, for Maya, the family plan was $200 a month, which isn't, isn't terrible. I think our highest plan right now is $144. So it's pretty comparable and we're getting so much more, so much more for a little bit more money. And again, just kind of some details. Oh, so this one is Delta Dental, just kind of showing what, what the different tiers cover. And here's Delta's prices. They are actually lower in their family plans. They're like slightly higher by a few cents in the other plans, but by the, for the family plans, they are overall lower. And here's just kind of an overview of all of the plans together, just a kind of a side-by-side comparison. I know this is a lot of information taken, so. And this is what we currently have right now. So again, our lowest, on the lowest plan, single core plan is $26 a month, and our highest plan, family plan right now, is $140 for the high plan, which again, we don't have as much, I mean, we do kind of have the same percentages. We only have a $1,000 rollover limit, $1,000 calendar year maximum. The deductibles are very similar. So things to consider, Maya does require us to be the only vendor. So we had kind of thrown around the idea of like, what if we just stayed with Guardian and added a new one? You know, because we're kind of under the time crunch. But unfortunately with Maya, we have to be the sole provider. With all three of these, we can make decisions right up until open enrollment in April. Delta requires 70% participation. She did actually clarify this, there is not the 50% town contribution anymore. So that's not a requirement, so we would just need a 70% participation for Delta. And the other thing, again, Aflac doesn't cover retirees. If I had to make a recommendation, this is what I would recommend. I just threw something in there again. I know this is a basic conversation. I think that kind of from here, really what we're looking for, I think Brian and I need to go ahead and, if you guys are on board with it, go ahead and have conversations with the unions. I think that's our first step before we can even dive into the, the details of, of different plans and providers. But I did want to give you some overview of what other companies have to offer. And if you had any, thank you for your time.
I did have one question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we currently reach the 70% participation?
We do.
Okay.
Yes, we do. I was very impressed.
Just curious.
Are we close or do we have?
So we have, we have way more, we have way more active participation, active, like, so members who are working than, than our retirees. So our retirees, we have 50%, but in general, like if you include retirees and our active members, active working members, we are at 71%.
What's the default if we drop below?
She said if you're like 69%, they're not going to, not going to come after you.
Obviously, employment fluctuates and people's decision of whether or not to continue with insurance fluctuates, so.
Absolutely. And we could get more participation if we had, you know. And she also said the, with the, there are waivers for that too. So if you have an employee who is covered on a dental plan by a spouse, or if you have, if you have a, an employee who is covered on their, still with their parents, that still counts as participation.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that's, yeah, I know, it was very.
If they're opting out.
Enrolled, but not with us.
They're enrolled, just not, okay.
Exactly. So I don't, I don't think we'd have a tough time because I guess most people have dental insurance, whether it's not with the town.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I have one. I'm not on any of the insurance plans, so it doesn't apply to me. But am I understanding it right that people were asked, and many of them said, yeah, they'd like to change and get some extra stuff.
Yes.
Dental, whatever. But it looked like the rates were going from 26 something for individual to 69, and from 140 to 190, is that what it was, give or take a little?
Yes, that, that would be for that. And it was also kind of maybe having the conversation of, so the town right now pays a portion of the dental. It's not a percentage, so you know how we pay 84% for our health insurance. We pay, I'm assuming when it got set up, it was maybe 50% of the original plan, but for a single plan, I think it's $14.38. For a employee plus one, I believe it's $28 and change, and then for a family plan is $53. So I didn't know if the town would, or if you all would entertain maybe going to a percentage. I did do the numbers and I kind of did quick numbers. So if we were to pay 50% and everyone kept the plan that they're on, it would be, it would be a $20,000 increase to our dental insurance if the town were to entertain the idea of paying for 50%. I think I have the exact numbers too, but.
And you said that's with our current Guardian plan?
Yeah, what they, what they are currently signed up for, exactly.
Correct.
Yes, yep. So if they were under an individual, I went ahead and took the difference and ran, ran some numbers, quick numbers today.
And your recommendation was two offerings?
Yes, I would, I would think.
Did you move them accordingly when you looked at what they, new premium would be?
Yes, yep. I chose the one that had the lower family coverage or not, or the, the amount that was, but I think that the two, pretty much Maya and Delta were pretty close as far as coverage went, and they were pretty close in price. And it was, my thought would be to offer one, you know, a kind of a lower plan, not a lower plan, but if you offered the percentages of like 180, 50, and then have your high plan as 100, 150, with the higher calendar year maximum and orthodontics. But again, these are just like beginning conversations, so.
Is there, do you know a ratio between the, our current plans, between one and two? Like, you know, base or enrollment?
Oh, enroll.
Roughly.
What, what we have for enrollment for?
Between like option one, option two and Guardian?
Yes, I have the numbers right here, actually.
Roughly.
Roughly, so we have a lot more in the core. So we have about 40, about 40 in the core and about 20 in the high. That's for our active members.
Okay.
And then 23 retirees are, are enrolled in those. I just don't have those specifics.
That's fine. And I wanted to do this with the Finance Committee, obviously, because if we consider changing the town's portion, then obviously it's a budget impact, so just to talk through that and understand that.
Do we know with other communities that offer dental, what, if they pay a portion?
That is a good question. I don't know, but I could absolutely find out for you.
Actually, if we can find out like, where's our plan, like what are their plans like, you know, as a comparison?
Definitely.
Be good to know.
I know Northfield is looking into new dental plans as well. Michelle is looking as well. I think they're going to eventually change too. They currently have Guardian and they're going to go to something new, like one of these plans too. So I think other people are shopping around, just because Guardian doesn't, doesn't cover a ton. I mean, you're paying a low premium, but you're also getting, you know, lower benefits.
Are we able to keep one, like the low Guardian plan as well as offered, Deltas, or do we have to be exclusive?
For Delta, I will double check if we have to be exclusive with them. That is a good question.
I don't think we'll hit 70% if we did that and people wanted it, but.
Yeah, but that's the only thing that I was wondering too. I think that's kind of how they say, well, we do want to be your sole provider because, yeah.
So you were saying your next step would be if there's some support to go do it, to speak with the unions, find out if there's, you know, what the feedback is, based on your findings of the availability of different options. I mean, I'd be in support of having that, those conversations and see where we go with those groups first, and see if it's even an option, and then move forward from there.
Yep.
There's nothing locking us in to actually change, but this is all exploratory at this point.
Absolutely, yep. And yeah, we have, we have until, until April to make a decision with, with one of the providers.
Okay.
And the Delta isn't in network out, network, it's pretty much across the board, except, right?
Yeah, they are, they are, they cover the most. I actually searched a bunch of dentists to see who would be covered around here. I polled people, said, who's your dentist? And so I looked them up and.
Looking for referrals.
Yeah, most of them were, were Delta covered. And actually, the Maya Dental Blue Freedom too was also, there were a lot of them in network as well.
I mean, supportive moving forward?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have thoughts on, and not decisions, but thoughts on contribution, whether we want to entertain changing that potentially if we change plans? The town's portion.
We can have that discussion. The other question I was going to throw out there is, I know you, you talked about union because there is a requirement, it's a change, so we have to, you know, negotiate that through union practices. But finding an opportunity to also share these findings with the rest of the employees and have those conversations as well, so it's not just the two union groups.
And retirees.
And retirees.
Absolutely.
So having that same conversation about, you know, we polled you.
Mm-hmm.
We did the research, here are the options, what do people think?
Mm-hmm.
Is it worth the change?
Yeah, I just have like a new.
I'd hate to have the three of us and, and, you know, the FinCom all support a change and make that change, and then 100% of the staff say, what did you just do? That makes no sense, so. I want to make sure they're behind it first before we start making those changes.
Good suggestion, thank you.
We can sit with the employees, retirees, and see if there's general support for moving in this direction and bring that feedback back to you all.
Okay.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good on that one.
Thanks, it's okay.
We'll also want to talk about the draft letter from the School Committee Chair.
So, switching hats.
Switching hats.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So I know we, we included it in the packet and, or, or added in here after. And you and I discussed a little bit, but, you know, kind of new for some, if not all of the group. So you did provide the background memo, but if you want to just high level talk to it.
Absolutely. And I just wanted to kind of point out too, in the letter that I did put the position is supported by the Select Board Chair. If, if you all do support the letter, it would be the Select Board and the Finance Committee as being fiscally responsible. I didn't upload the most recent copy, so I apologize. So yes, the purpose of this was, I just wanted to provide some facts and some transparency to the community about what's going on, since we are in mediation, we are able to, to talk about this publicly. And again, as we approach budget season, or, you know, we're going to be putting together our school budget, I just wanted to see if you were in support of our current position right now as it stands. So that's kind of where, where I was kind of going with the letter and the memo. If you all have any questions, I'm happy to answer anything that you have. Just want to make some, some good financial decisions, and I want to make sure that we are also offering a fair contract as well. We deeply appreciate everything that the teachers do. As a being a former educator, I understand what it's like to be in their roles.
I just like to add that I was very impressed with the letter.
Okay.
And it was very informative. I don't recall being asked if I was in support of it, but I am.
Okay, thank you so much. That's kind of what the purpose was this evening, yes.
That's the purpose of having this discussion, obviously. Jennifer and I have spoke about it off and on, so, you know, she knows that I've been in support and, you know, here and there, you know, casually, we've discussed where, where it's at, and, you know, and the general concept of what she was putting together. And we discussed whether, you know, would the board and the Finance Committee be interested in supporting, you know, as a group with, with that letter? And I said, well, this would be the form to do it. So that's why I brought it here, so that, that's why it's here in front of us if there's an interest in, as a group, supporting it or individually, you know, anyone who would like to, to add that. So that, I should have started with that a little more clearly. That's where, that's why we're, why, why we're here. I take no credit for drafting it, that's all. It's all Jennifer putting all the data together and writing that.
You have my support.
Thank you so much.
So I, I've read the letter. It, it got me curious about some numbers. I know we've talked in the past about, you know, where, you know, how these are going, how the sessions are going. You had mentioned that the, the town stance right now is the two, two and a half, two and a quarter, two and a half. But it also talks about the inclusion of a new lane for PhD.
Yes.
Do you know offhand what the jump would be for a percentage?
Yes, 3%. I think it does, yeah.
I must have missed that.
It would be, oh no, I just didn't put it in there. It would be the same thing as what they're proposing with a master's plus 60. Yes, it would just be, it would just be instead of doing that, we just wanted to have that level of certification, because again, you can get 60 credits pretty much in anything.
Right.
And I'm, I'm absolutely sure they're all getting an education, but it is nice to kind of tie it to that certification. And it does also attract other positions like a school psychologist as well. So that's where we were going with that link.
So if that language goes in, just going to run some quick numbers.
Sure.
Then your new PhD lane, step 14, in the current salary schedule would then be 87, 171, or 172 as it rounds up. So, just because that's not, it wasn't listed on there. So I just wanted to make sure that people are aware of.
Thank you for asking for that clarification.
So I, you know, I read the letter. It, I went back and I, I've sat on negotiations on behalf of the town, on behalf of the School Committee, the superintendent when she was hired for a dozen years as an employee. I was the, you know, negotiated as the vice president of my own union for a bunch of years. So I'm very familiar with it. This, you know, it's complex and it can be, we try not to let things get adversarial, but mediation just feels muddy. It feel, you know, so hopefully we can get a good resolution. I was very happy with the fact-based.
Yes.
Letter and, you know, dispelling some of the myths that are out there and the misunderstandings that are out there. So I'm in support of the, the letter going out and being published.
Thank you.
Because I'm not an expert, I'll ask you a couple of questions just to clarify. The percent rate increases, right? Those are on top of step, any step change if you're not maxed on the table, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So it's.
It's that plus.
It's change of the entire table. So if you, if you also get a step change, then.
You get the step plus.
Right, essentially, like you're not getting a 2% increase, you're getting more like a four or five.
It'd be closer to five because you're going to get a two.
Because you have a new schedule every, yes.
Yep.
That's inflated, yep.
So you're getting a two changes basically at the same time.
Correct, yeah.
And the master plus 60, with 60 graduate level credits, the counter is the PhD certificate?
Yes.
Because it requires a certificate.
Correct, yes.
But effectively, the credits are the same, but it requires it to be focused on.
Right, you have to.
Rather than any.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next level.
So it's equivalent, I didn't really talk to that. It's equivalent, but it requires a certificate, a certificate program rather than.
Yes, exactly, yep.
Okay.
Could I ask, does anyone recall, has the Select Board and the Finance Committee traditionally been involved in negotiating teachers and school contracts? Between teachers and union and stuff?
I can tell you that in the last decade and a half, it's never gone to mediation. So it's only because, it's only because we're in the, the School Committee is in this position of being at an impasse, that they could not come to an agreement between the Teachers Association and the School Committee to sign an agreement, that it's gone to the level of mediation. So that's the only reason it gets to public discussion outside of a, a private negotiation session.
But it's currently in mediation?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, I was unable to attend at a health issue, uh, two weeks ago, so I don't know that, um, it's nice to think that we're all in this together, but the other side, from a back, like the way of saying it, uh, have, have they had opportunity to express their opinions other than by reading the papers, you know, to us? I mean, I just want to kind of want to be fair to all sides, want all sides to feel like I'm being fair, you know, before I say, I like this or I like that. I mean, I don't, I don't know, I mean, again, I don't want to read in the papers, I'm not having my head in the sand, but, um.
Are you asking about the teachers?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. They, they've attended, um, the last two school committee meetings. Um, they've, they voiced their concerns and their, um, and they've also, um, they've written, I think there's been four letters, I think, published in the recorder. Um, and I believe they just had, um, a session meeting with parents, um, at the library this past Thursday.
Well, I mean, I, I, I understand I read in the papers too. But they hadn't been to us.
So, so this is, this is a request to support the, the, um, school committee chair publishing a letter in the paper as they have been doing repeatedly. And it's just a question of whether or not, um, we want to put support on that from, from these groups as well or individuals on these groups.
Okay.
As well. Um, have they come to us with anything? No. They're in mediation now, so it's public to have these conversations. They could, they have not requested to be on the agenda that I'm aware of.
Well, I mean, I, from my point, it may be a little bit outside the purview of the finance committee, but I'd certainly support putting the letter out there for people in the paper, people can read, both sides of the issue. I don't, don't know that I'd be ready to say, yes, I support this instead of supporting that, because I haven't really compared the two, you know, side by side. And I don't want the teachers union, the teachers or staff, whoever else, to, to feel like we're making decisions and they didn't come to us and say, well, here's our points of view. So we just got a one-sided thing. Although, um, on one hand, to me, it looks fiscally responsible from a financial point of view, but you know from last year's discussions. I was concerned then that inflation is going to go through the roof and 2% isn't going to cut it when you buy a gallon of milk, you know, so it's still my concern. But I'm not a part of your negotiation either. I, I certainly support putting the paper so people get, you know, both sides of the issues, they understand more. They make an informed decision. I, I don't know that I'd be ready to say, yeah, I support this whole proposal from a financial point of view. Just my thoughts.
That's why, that's why I want to have the conversation. Bring it to us all. Can you explain a little bit more about the, um, one-time bonus piece?
Yes, this was just recently, um, submitted to us via email through their, um, legal counsel. So I believe, um, their thought is that they wanted the, the $5,000 bonus for each member, um, for working through COVID.
And how does that link to this S R refund?
So the S R three funds, um, I don't have the exact details of what the money is supposed to be spent on, um, but there were, there were, uh, there were, the superintendent sent out a letter and reached out to all the staff and community members. And, um, they had some meetings together, um, to decide on how to spend the money. So the, the teachers were, um, all invited and they did have one spokesperson. Um, and it was at the time their, um, ETA president that had attended the meetings, um, to go ahead and decide what the money to be spent on. It's, the F, S R three money is kind of like the town's ARPA money. So it was $207,000 to be spent on, um, kind of rebuilding after the aftermath of, of, of the, of the pandemic. Kind of fill in those gaps, um, social emotional needs, um, and it has been already, uh, $207,000 has already been allocated. So that, that, that group, that meeting group met together and decided, um, what the fund should be spent on.
So if I'm understanding correctly, they're saying because the $207,000 was spent on something else, they are asking for this $5,000 bonus, is that correct?
That's where I'm, I'm not quite a hundred percent sure. Um, I believe, I believe, um, this, I mean, and what they're, they're quoting here saying that, you know, for working through COVID. And the money has already been allocated, so I, maybe they're not all a hundred percent on board in understanding that, I'm not quite sure.
Can you, are you able to tell us what the money was allocated for?
Uh, yes, I had, I had a sheet, hang on, let me see if I pull it up. I had a, a, a graph that I included in there, but it was old, it was pretty, pretty detailed, so I didn't know if we necessarily needed it. So yes, um, it's, it's basically, it's going towards salaries. We do have an adjustment counselor, so that is being funded to, through there. Sorry. I have too many, um, emails.
While you're looking that up, if you can multitask, I just have a question related to, um, you had mentioned the funding was used for the adjustment counselor.
Yes.
As one of the, one of the pieces of that 207. Is that a temporary position that is set to go away after the September 30th, 2024 deadline to expend the funds? Or is the anticipation that the cost of the adjustment counselor will then be rolled into the operating budget of the school?
Um, I believe it will eventually go into the operating budget of the school. I believe it's a, a permanent position. So I have it up here now. So, um, they allocated $12,000, $12,793 for supplies and materials, $14,000 for stipends, $17,550 for contracted services, $7,000 for health insurance, $120,000 for instructional staff expense, $10,800 for, uh, MT RS, and $20,370.19 for support staff. So the adjustment, the adjustment counselor is in the instructional staff expense, that line. And that does not add up to $207,000 and I asked where the $5,129.81 was, and that was allocated the previous year. The previous year, they had already used that funds.
I'm glad you think we're that good that we counted that on the fly and we're like, where's the other five?
I don't know, Scott's pretty quick, he writes stuff down and is like, hmm.
No, I didn't catch that it was five.
I didn't write them down. I wasn't gonna be done in my head.
FinCom, anyone else with thoughts?
Or questions?
I, I do support that this get published, um, but I don't support the increase or the, um, bonus.
And I just, for the record, I'm, I understand it's a little different than usual because there's mediation going on. But I'm a little uncomfortable with finance and select board being directly involved in negotiations between teachers and school committee. And I'm just concerned that it'll contribute to a perception of we against them or they against us or that, and I don't want to, I don't want to box this into that corner. Certainly support the thing being published, everybody gets information. I'd probably want to give more money because of the situation. On the one hand, I like people to keep up with inflation and it's going through the roof. On the other hand, I'm not real thrilled about Irving taxpayers coughing up $500, $5,000 per teacher because most people worked through somehow through COVID and I don't know that they got five cents. I mean, they got their pay and that was it. It's, it's not that I'm unsupportive of teachers or, I don't have a bad word to say about them, but financially, it just makes it a little uncomfortable for, for them to get something for working through COVID and everybody else just doesn't.
Just to clarify too, um, the $5,000 is their request? We, we are, yeah, the school committee i- is just offering the, the two, two and a quarter, two and a half. So we, we, we were not in support of it as of now. Yeah, we just felt that.
You're getting the information out for everybody, it's great.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm still comfortable of us being in the middle of the negotiation, so.
No, I, I think, uh, I get, I'll say it again, I'm in favor of it being published. It, uh, brings out a lot of questions about, equity. I know on the town level, there was a lot of effort put into, uh, the study of where we are as far as the, the region and how our pay scales compare to counterparts across the region and looking for equity from job to job. The school was not involved in that because they're a union, they have their own contract, they did their own negotiations. But if you look at the pay equity, I think you mentioned it in the letter, um, but they are at the top. There is, uh, and if the two, two and a quarter, two and a half plus the PhD, it'll, if my math is correct and looking up, because you can go on to Department of Ed and look up any of the contracts for all of the state, they're all public record, they're, they're accessible. The average in the area, Greenfield, 75,000, maxed out, M plus 30, they don't have a 45, they don't have a PhD. Montague, 77, Northfield, 75, those are PhD steps at 75. We have a master's plus 30 at 84. Prior to any conclusion of this with a new lane and new increases that are still yet to be negotiated. So, um, you know, in transparency, this letter brings about that dialogue of saying, what is really being asked? Where do we stack up against our counterparts across the region? How do we compare, you know, our, our whole financial package benefits? We just talked about dental, all of that, you know, what's our, what's our cost share that the town puts in? How does that compare to others? So I think if this letter sort of engages the community in saying, where's our money being spent? I'm all for that conversation.
Thank you.
For the record, I support what you guys are doing and the publishing of the letter.
Thank you very much. Very lucky to work in this town, very lucky.
Probably both Scott and Jennifer can add to this, but just to clarify one piece, you had asked about, you know, involvement in negotiations. So the select board is always has at least a liaison who is, uh, up to speed. Uh, I believe they can attend, they're not a voting member, but they can attend them as well.
Correct.
The private negotiation, contract negotiations, but, um, just one member and it's not, not something we discuss or we discuss, you know, that it, the board discusses and it's not discussed in public, obviously. That's, we're only here now because of this, because they're in mediation and able to discuss that and know about it and, and all of that, so.
Yeah, so for clarity, I'm the liaison to the school committee. Uh, in the previous contract negotiation, I did attend sessions, uh, you know, the closed door negotiation sessions. Sat with the school committee as they were across the table from the teachers association and, and haggling through. Uh, during this round, I had notified the chair that I was not going to be sitting at the sessions, but available to chat, you know, about just getting updates of where they're at, how it's going, um, but not sort of, not giving any, uh, there's no heavy-handed of what we support, what we don't. We've been very public about, you know, the town looks at a two and a half percent levy limit and, you know, so anything above that is sort of taking from something else. So do with that what you want, school committee. That's, you know, our overall stance of the, the perfect scenario of we shouldn't increase above that because it, you have to take it from somewhere to fund that. But allowing the school committee to do what they're charged to do and, and have their negotiations and, and hold those. So that's, there's always been a select board present and, and participating in some form, uh, one way or another.
Yeah, in my opinion, whatever that's worth, that's how it ought to be. That's, that's fine, that's good.
The design of it. And I've only been kind of up to speed and, and, you know, discussed with the chair about it, um, since, you know, they're in mediation now and, and just talking through where, where we are, where that puts us and then obviously tonight to bring it here, to have the open discussion about it. Just to, not to put anyone in the spot, but I just want to clarify that I heard it right for my benefit and, and for yours, so. I heard support of publishing, I heard support, and I'm not sure, I think I heard support of what is proposed as well by the school committee, I think. But I want to be careful that we differentiate that, um, and if, if we're putting that in the letter especially, or not. And so I, I, I know, I think you started and said you're in support, in support of the position of the school committee or in support of publishing the letter or both?
Both.
Okay.
Same.
Okay, I'm, same.
Thank you.
And I, Dan, if I heard you, not to put words in your mouth, you were in support of publishing.
Yes.
Same.
Publishing only.
Okay, and then?
Both.
Both?
Both.
Both, okay. So, that's the board, the select board in full. I leave it to the finance committee members if they want that noted, those who are in support of both, or if they'd rather just, leave it as the select board. It's their choice, it's, it's the publishing, so I don't, you know.
And I'm sorry to put you in a sticky position and I appreciate you having this open discussion with me.
That's okay. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of having the minutes of how I feel about it. And it may, sometimes things contradict a bit. You know, I, I don't know about the $5,000 thing because everybody does get $5,000. On the other hand, my position from last year hasn't changed. Price of gallon of milk goes up and they say inflation's 8% and everything's up 20 or 40%, go buy a pork chop sometime. And so I think we should keep up with that. So I, I'm not sure 2% would cut it, you know, in, in the general budget discussion. So I don't want to be inconsistent and say that I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of publishing, I'm not quite yet in favor of, of everything. But I put that in the context of everybody else we're going to be looking at too. Is 2% good enough? Um, I think last year we decided we'd look at every few years, we look at the whole, the whole thing. And 2% to me just doesn't seem to cut it in today's life. Just my thought, okay.
But that's 2% additional over the stuff?
So, um, that would be the entire chase. So the chart would inflate 2%. And then if you were to, yes, if you were like say on step three, you would go to step four and there's 3% in between those steps. But if you're at the top step, you're, you're, you're only going to get a two, yes, yep.
Just anything, anything more than that, I mean, well, any increase is being paid for by someone else. Who, in a lot of cases, didn't get anything, uh, extra. In some cases, it's costing them more.
And it just, Dan, just my opinion is our discussions about wages here have been step.
Yep.
Change in how much the step is.
Correct.
Not necessarily overhaul on the whole chart. That's been of late and we did one last, you know, last year. This is every year both, if you're not maxed out. So, but I think, for me, the context is different. The discussions that we've had has, has been a lot more conservative than that. And as I've come to learn more, in the more recent years, has always been more conservative than the school contract. Because there've always been like three plus three or whatever, if you're not maxed, obviously, but, but 14 steps, I mean, it's not much different. We have 15, there's a lot of steps there, it's a lot of.
It's hard to consider it all, it's apples and oranges, it's almost like fruit salad, trying to keep it consistent, but I'm good.
Throw in the region and the communities around us and now you've got a couple fruits there. I just wanted to make it clear, just to make sure if anyone wanted to be published on that, you know, I don't want to say they can't, but I also don't want to have people published in that. This is public, it is what it is, but that's in the newspaper, so I just wanted to make sure it was clear what people wanted on there, so.
Thank you.
Are you clear on what people want, other than the board?
Yes, yes, we have, that's the blackboard and, and, and I, I could, I could say half of the finance committee or I could just not quote it at all. So I, I just want to make sure that everyone's comfortable with what I put in there.
I am fine with half of the finance committee if that's.
Is that okay?
Everyone else is?
All right, thank you so much for your time. I'm sorry, I took up a lot of your time this evening, so thank you very much.
It's all budget, it's all important.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the efforts on the school committee.
Okay, next up on budget, we have police. Chief, join us? Chief, whenever you're ready, if you want to walk us through, uh, some of the highlights and challenges of the current fiscal year and then your goals and initiatives for next fiscal year.
Sure.
And then we can get into some of the specific changes.
Sure. Uh, so first of all, thanks for having me. And if my phone.
So first of all, thanks for having me, and if my phone goes off, I apologize.
If it doesn't, you need to take it, we understand.
No, it's, for some reason I cannot silence it anymore, so it just rings. So for the police department, some of the highlights and challenges are, is that we are for the first time in a long time at full staff with six officers. And so I, I, it feels like we gain six and then we lose two. We gain one, lose two, so for the first time we're, we're at six and it feels real good. Morale seems to be real high right now with, with not having to work all the overtime. We brought back the K nine program, which I think, you know, most people by this point know, know about that. And we've partnered with the surrounding communities and CSO of Greenfield to bring on a mental health clinician. And have received nothing but positive feedback on, on that program. And the, the police department has finally, the union has finally finalized their union and that's in full swing. And so I think that that was, that was a good thing to, to get that behind us. And we've brought back part-time officers. You know, I think we've had part-time, then we went away from part-time. And I think that we kind of realized there's a need for some part-time at, at a capacity, and so we've, we've brought that back. So those were some of the highlights. Challenges are getting the numbers back to the six was a long process. It was, it was not a pleasant time at the police department. We had the cruiser accident, so we, we had that issue that we just recently had to, had to address. And I didn't put in here, but we also had the cancellation of a cruiser because of supply. But we worked through both of those issues. They were a challenge, but we did, we did work through them both. We have an officer with the post requirements. We did have an officer that has met the post requirements, but we have another officer that we're still currently working to get the post requirements of the twenty-four hundred hours, work hours, that's patrol hours. So if he works a detail or goes to court or is doing admin work, that, that time doesn't count. It's actually just patrol hours. And he's, he's, he's a ways away from that. We probably won't reach that for another year. And what that means is that he just won't be certified as a full-time officer. He has all the requirements, just needs the, the, the time on the job. So that's an issue that we do have to face because we can't have him working forty hours scheduled. That's not to say he doesn't go forty hours, you know, gets held over or something like that, obviously he's, you know, the job comes first, so.
And then chief, there's still overtime, overtime eligible, right? You can still.
Still overtime eligible.
To cover and things like that.
That's correct, but he's not eligible.
Daily scheduled for.
Daily scheduled, yeah, correct. And then obviously his overtime wouldn't kick in until he gets to that forty hours or the eighty hours for the week, for the bi-weekly. So that's an issue that we're still working to get, get that taken care of. And then just one of the issues is that we're, we're trying to figure out a way to be better prepared for, for upcoming staffing issues in the event that we do lose another officer. You know, we don't want to be back in the situation where it was. You know, for a while there it was just Officer Bryant and myself that was working shifts because we had, you know, officer out on, on, on some family time and then we were down three officers, so. Had an officer in the academy, so at one point it literally was just two of us running, running the shift and, or three. And we just don't want to be back there. And so that's why we've kind of, I've talked about with the select board, I'm sure you guys have heard the cadet program that we're looking to implement and the, the policy was accepted by the select board, so. Just trying to think outside the box to be, better be prepared for, for officers leaving. You know, you look at our staff right now and, and I hope that everybody stays. I'm hopeful that everybody stays, you look and you say, oh, this, we have a good, good group, but you never know what will happen, so. And so those were the, the highlights and the challenges. Do we want to talk about the upcoming goals?
Please.
Okay. So the department will continue to work towards getting all full-time officers their certification and hours. You know, that, that's like I discussed in the challenges, hopefully by the end of two thousand and twenty-four, that officer will have that certification. We will need to send, we have two part-time officers with post-commission, the oversight of the committee that is, that is in place, all of our part-time officers now have to go to what's called a bridge academy. And so we have two part-time officers and it's all broken down by their, their dates, their last name. And so currently we have one officer with the last name Kay that we're, need to send. He works for a few other departments and so it's not necessarily Irvin's responsibility to send him, but there may be some, some times when we would have to provide him with a cruiser or, or some ammo or something like that for, to get his certification. And if he doesn't do it by the end of, of this fiscal year, June of two thousand and twenty-three, then he's decertified and he can't work for us. And then we'll have another officer with the last name W, but that's, that's, you know, FY twenty-five goals. So we're looking at that. It, it's really been a priority of mine to staff our, our shifts, first and second shift with two officers. I, I, I think you guys have heard me talk about just the benefit of having two officers on a shift. It's, it's crazy out there, this is a crazy world that we live in and it's not getting any better. And it just really gives me the flexibility of if an officer is off, I'm not forced with having to force somebody in, we can just still run with one officer on that shift, not that we want to. But it, it definitely takes away from forcing people to come in and work. Also frees up officers, you know, if, if one officer is dealing with an arrest, that still frees up another officer to respond for another motor vehicle accident or something like that. So that's really a priority of mine for two thousand and twenty, twenty-four. We currently don't have two officers on Saturday day shift, Sunday day shift, Sunday second shift and Monday second shift. So those are the only shifts that we are not currently staffing with too. We're definitely going to have to be looking at our department policies and, and just going through those and modifying, redoing them, you know, with, with police reform, that's going to become a, a, a big priority moving forward. The departments are going to have to get a certification or accreditation. And so part of that certification and or accreditation is going to require us to look at our policies. And, and so I, I'd imagine that that's going to be a, a huge, a huge task. Hopefully we'll have a lot of help from the mass chiefs, which I'm assuming we will. But it's definitely something that we need to be aware of. And then finalizing the cadet program, hopefully we can finalize that. And the policy's been accepted, but actually get somebody hired for that position and, and, and get them training and working.
Chief, would you mind, I don't know if the FinCom has heard about that, would you mind just giving a quick overview of what it is?
Yes, so what we, what we're looking to do is we've been through many hiring processes and we're finding that we're getting a lot of good candidates that just don't have the academy. And so we can hire them, but what do we do with them? Because they can't work the streets, they can't go on calls until we get them to the academy. So really by the time you go through the hiring interviews, the, the background checks, then wait for an academy. Waiting for an academy could be two months, maybe you get lucky, or it could be six months, maybe you just missed an academy class. So hiring a new officer that doesn't have the academy, you're looking at a year plus before you could even use this officer on the street. So what we've, what we've done and with the, the approval of the select board is we've wrote in a, a policy that allows an individual in that position to come on board. We would be paying them, because who's going to say, yeah, I'll take the job. Well, we might not send you to an academy for eight months or six months. You know, who's going to, who, who would do that is difficult to find. So we pay them, we begin to give them policies, procedures, we begin to train them with department issues, our, our record system, our dispatch system, our policies, procedures, we could even get them on like the firing range. We could get them traffic certified so that eventually they could maybe start working some details. They're training with the officers, riding with the officers in the cruisers. We can use them for positions like, hey, we need to do a cruiser swap at, at, at the local. You know, maybe it needs to go to Ford and we could use that officer to do that as opposed to tying up an on-duty, you know, patrol position. And so the whole time they would be getting paid and training, learning how to do the job, get them to the academy. And then when they come out of the academy, hopefully they are at a position where they've already learned all the other stuff that's necessary. Opens up our hiring pool to, you know, be able to say, yeah, we can now accept this person with, with these qualifications. We had two local candidates this last, this last go-around and we just didn't have a position for them, so. The hope is, and then what, what I'm looking to do is so that would kind of be the seventh position. So then if we lost an officer, well, now we just go back to our six and, and we, we maintain. And then we look to hire another cadet program. And, and so it's kind of like a, 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 hopefully a, a security plan, I guess, for when we do lose somebody. And then if we lost two, you know, we would have, we would, instead of going down to four, we'd go down to five because this cadet would be in place. And then we would just consistently look to, to rehire that and refill that position. Once we had seven, if we didn't lose an officer and that cadet came out of the academy and then was a fully certified officer, we wouldn't hire the cadet program again until we lost another officer, then that cadet went down to that officer position and then we would begin the cadet hiring process again.
Okay, thank you.
And so those were some of my, oh, and then the, obviously, you know, we, we brought the K nine program on. I just want to see that to be, you know, continue to be successful, a successful program. And so those were the, the goals. And then I just had a little, a couple more lines here, adding the police wage, as you guys can see, is, is adding the seventh member. Having part-time officers where we, where we had done away with them, you know, using them to fill in shifts. I'd like to try to create so we have the, 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 the full-time officers and then the part-time officers have their own budget so we can really get an understanding of what, what it is that we're needing for part-time work, what their budget is. That's not cutting into the budget of the full-time officers. And adding to the budget, the funds for the K nine program to properly run a successful program. And, and so those are the highlights, challenges, goals and initiatives, hopefully I explained it well.
Questions on any of it, I probably should have had you, even if you asked me if you wanted to go pause on twenty-three if there was any questions on that, but any of it? And then looking at the line item details on the wages and such.
I was just curious, under the line for electricity. Is that increase just due to the, the cost of electricity or is that just for charging the car? Because I know obviously if, if charging your car is in the electricity budget, budget, it's taken away from fuel, so it's, it's still. It's not like it's added, it's just shifted.
Yeah, so that. Yep, so that was a, a last minute addition that I made, Charlie. We, we received an email from Brian that, it was a confusing email, I really honestly didn't understand it and I checked around with a few other departments, I'm not going to lie, I, it was, it was a complicated. But basically because the, the cost of, of electricity is going up fifty percent, so I, I doubled my electricity.
I was just curious.
No, it has nothing to do with the cruiser.
Oh, okay.
I'll just add, that, that kind of came from me as a director when we kind of went through this and we got the rate changes and we have the two electric companies and, and you know electric rates better than we do.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, deciphering one of those tables for everyone trying to budget. And we took kind of the, I took kind of the approach of the general consensus is it's fifty percent more expensive for everybody. So let's just start with that number, if it's a little better, great, but from a budgeting perspective, so. Tried to just make it simple and say.
Yeah.
Plus fifty percent across the board and that's what we're going to see in the budget.
And to the question you were asking about EV charging, when we get to the fuel budgets in public works, where we keep gasoline and diesel, we've added an electricity line item and we're attributing it there, so.
Okay. And I believe there's also a capital request for a charger at the station, but I think that that's separate than this as well. It has nothing to do with me, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we would meter it separately, so we'd be able to track that usage, correct.
There's some requirement to report fuel usage and that's going to count, right? So we have to separate it because, even if it's electric.
Right.
Right? Okay, so, so it will always continue to be fuel.
Yes.
Just electric fuel.
So I got to ask as a dog owner, is fifteen hundred bucks really enough for medical expense?
So when I presented it to the select board, North County Veterinary Clinic, I believe they're Berniston, or they're Greenfield, I can't remember, they're right on the line there. They did us a huge favor, they gave us like fifty to sixty percent off on medical expenses.
Yeah, the quote that they, that you submitted was substantially discounted.
It was amazing what they did for us. And so I, I know Officer Gordon recently did rabies, you know, the, the checkups and everything. And I, and I think, I think the bill was a hundred, hundred and twenty bucks or something like that, so, yeah, they did, they did us real good.
Okay.
So.
How do I get on that plan?
But I mean.
As a family with what, five dogs or four dogs, yeah.
Obviously, Deb, I mean, you know, if we were to, if the dog, I've talked with Officer Gordon about this and obviously if the dog was to break its leg or something like that, fifteen hundred dollars isn't going to cover that cost, so. I don't know, how do you budget that? I, I mean, I guess I could ask for ten thousand, but never, never use it type thing. So I think fifteen hundred is what I'm trying to think of as for, you know, your, your, your checkups, your rabies, your vaccination, your flea, things like that.
Okay.
And I'd also just say that the six thousand, that, that's probably also a, a little under. We, we have the dog already, we were able to, to come up with that money in the budget that we have now. And so that six thousand does not include if we were in a situation five years from now, ten years from now, whatever, to, to replace the dog. I mean, we're looking at probably two thousand to five thousand, six thousand for a dog, eight hundred to five thousand for a dog. We, we were, we got the dog for three hundred or three fifty, I don't remember, but it was, it was a good deal, so.
And I assume that general expense line is like any of Ziva's gear, her food, all that kind of stuff?
Correct, food, yeah, you know, harnesses, things like that.
Yeah, okay.
Dan, why you got the calculator out?
Trying to figure that, there's a few things that, that you can't avoid. Electricity is what it is, everybody knows that. There are a couple of things that I think people support having a K nine unit and your plan of, so you don't have to put two people trying to work themselves to death to cover all the shifts, like the, the plan. And that's like, and those, those things are a big, big chunk of the ninety-seven thousand increase, like about seventy-four thousand. So it puts you down to twenty-five ish of thousand or so. Just looking at how much the increase is, you're down around, I don't know, four or five percent ish or so. So I'm just, because you look at the whole thing, you say, gee, my goodness, it's eighteen percent, but, but there are things that people support. Things like not having a chief and one officer work themselves to pieces, it's not good for you or for the town. And people like to have a dog, you can't control electricity. So I look at those things, say, we, we really ought to just kind of give them a pass because people may change their mind, I can't speak for everybody, but for me, they're worthwhile. So I look at your whole budget and what's the increase? If you're around four or five percent, everybody knows, I mean, what's the cost of a bullet, it's not what it used to be, you know? Things go up, so I'm, I'm supportive of, of the percentages as they work out.
And, and I guess I should point out to the, to the, to the FinCom and to the select board, I didn't know what to budget my salary at, so I just level funded myself. So that, that, that salary, the wages is level funding me, but it was given the officers the two percent. I didn't know what, I mean.
We have to adjust that, it's, because your contract's still active, so. No, it's not.
No, you're right. Yeah, we're about to, we're about to enter into that.
I'm glad you're on top of it.
Yeah, so, and I, and I don't have a scale to go off of, so, right?
No, you're right, you're, you're right. How time flies.
You're serious.
We're far from a final document here, but this is acceptable to me.
I just had one question, chief, on heating oil. I know you were over a little bit last year in FY twenty-two.
I was over.
It was a little higher than budget, it was fifty-five versus five thousand. I don't know if you expect that to be even more this year or not, you didn't budget a change, but with the cost of electricity, I don't know if we should expect that to be higher too or not.
Yeah, I apologize, Chairman Smith, I, I didn't, I didn't know that I went in the red on my fuel.
I think so, if I'm reading it right, it's like five hundred dollars.
Yeah, okay.
You're, you're good, you're good. I'm just asking if we should be adjusting it for this year.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
So, I would say, similar to,
The adjustment that you gave direction on for electricity, we will have brand-new multi-year fuel contracts in the next few months.
Right.
We'll have those before we finish the budget. We're in the third year of our existing contracts, so in January we'll be doing,
Okay.
so, once we have that procured, we can go back through and update all of the facilities that use heating fuel.
Okay, so we can take an adjustment for actual, plus an adjustment for new cost and,
Correct.
see where we are.
Okay.
You wouldn't have had a good answer anyway, so.
I didn't know I went in the red.
I just want to clarify, it's fifty-five hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Fifty-five thousand?
That's a lot of fuel.
Thank you.
That's a, that's a good clarification, the audience will be wondering what we're,
That's why in the wintertime we walk around in our shorts.
Outside, for that kind of, wow, thank you, yeah, I'm, I'm just, thank you.
And then I just think the other big one was the cell phone, um, we've added a phone, we've added a Mi-Fi. Um, and then I'm, I, my Comcast has gone up. Uh, my phone for, at the station has gone up, and so I, that was all, just, I did take what I am currently with those bills, times them by twelve, and that's what the number I came up with.
And we're also about to do another three-year contract for the townwide phone system, so all of those rates will update again.
Yeah, okay.
And just because we ask this question, everybody, every budget season, um, do you have an update for us on the state radio program and how that's going, or?
So, no, so, um, unfortunately, when, when I came in as the chief, I, obviously there was a lot that I was trying to learn, and, and Phil and, and, um, Chief Blair had been working on the radios, and so I kind of, I just asked Phil, I'm like, listen, I trust you, I don't, I don't have time to get caught up to speed on the radio process. I do know that we still have some, some, some reception issues down in the center of town, I know Phil is working on some sort of a site to put in a tower and stuff, but.
Working on repeaters, to be able to,
Repeaters, we do have, we do have a repeater in one of our cruisers, which has been very helpful, we have another repeater that's gonna be going into a cruiser. Um, and then there's, there's question if we're, we're getting two more repeaters or one more repeater.
Two more in order, so those should be coming shortly, and Chief Wonka's working on a proposal with the state to place a tower downtown.
Right.
That potentially could help with the coverage issues.
The dead spots.
Um, it would be a proposal to use a piece of town property, so we would bring it to the three of you for consideration.
And with those four repeaters, obviously every time we, you know, changed over a car or whatever, that repeater, would, was just like the radio and all the other equipment would go into the new cruiser, so.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't have a better answer, but.
That's a pretty good answer, we'll take it.
And that puts a repeater in all of our,
Except for,
Patrol fleet, basically, not, not the chief admin.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other question for police budget?
How is the new car working out?
Uh, I like it, I, I am finding in the cold weather, um, my charge levels have dropped down. Um, I'm finding that I am charging it more often than I was during, you know, I had it for a very short period of time in the fall time.
Yeah.
And then, so since we've added the lights and the police radio, it has dropped the, the charge level down, you know? So like a max charge was maybe two fifteen, now a max charge is one eighty-five to two hundred. Um, and now in the wintertime, it's down around the one seventy mark for a max charge. So the, the cold weather does have an effect on it, and then adding the equipment to it has had an effect on it. But still, I, it's, I, it's, when I, when I charge it, um, you know, I know, uh, Mr. Smith gets the, the reports, I think it's like ten dollars to charge it, so it's really not bad to charge it up. The problem is, is that it does take a little bit of time to charge it. So like right now, I have it sitting over at the library, sitting on the charge while I've been here, so I just gotta plan that type of stuff out.
And those numbers are mileage roughly, is that what you said?
Yeah, the mileage, I'm sorry, yep, the hundred and seventy-five is a hundred and seventy-five mileage on a full charge. Whereas when we first got it and we didn't have the equipment in it and it wasn't cold, we were two twenty. You know, at a full charge, we were two hundred and twenty miles, now we're down around a hundred and seventy-five miles for, for a full charge, so. I would, I would, I would suggest that I don't think we're in any position for patrol yet, for, for electric. Um, and, and definitely if we were to ever do it again, um, we would be looking at, uh, uh, you know, now they're making more of the vehicles that have a three hundred and fifty mile range, I think that would make more sense than.
Yeah, I was gonna say a hundred and seventy-five for a patrol, that's, it's just not enough mileage.
When it takes five, six hours to charge it too, so.
It's just not, it's not sustainable.
Right. But for patrol, but for, for what we're using it for as the admin vehicle, I mean, it's been great. I know a couple of our guys, uh, we sent an officer to CIT training that the, uh, the, for the DMH grant that we have, uh, had to go back and forth to Springfield, he drove it down to Springfield, charged it right there, drove it back, and I mean, he drove it all week, and what, maybe ten dollars to charge it every day, so. Yeah, it has been nice as far as that goes.
Yeah. Nice. I wonder when they actually come out with them as, as, you know, special service vehicles and actually make them that way, they'll probably, I wonder if they'll have secondary power for all the utility stuff, you know, radios and all that, too.
Yeah. Maybe a gas generator attached to it.
Other questions on police budget? No?
Nope.
All right, we'll jump to animal control while you're up here.
Yep.
So that's a couple pages down, we're in, uh,
Three, four, seven?
I was gonna go three, six, so, we'll go three, seven.
Uh, so the, uh, the animal control, uh, I, I'm, I'm level funding, uh, we'll make it simple, I am level funding. Um, you know, I think that some of the challenges are, is that obviously we're, we're in the position to see if, uh, you know, if, if our ACO will be back to work. If not, um, then we're obviously gonna have to look to either fill that position, um, with somebody, uh, or, or if we're gonna contract it out, uh, I would be in favor of filling the position. I think there is a benefit to having, having somebody here in our town fill that position. One of the biggest challenges that we'll have, um, regardless if our ACO comes back or doesn't come back, is that there, I think that we just need to have a better, me as the chief has to have a better understanding of what it entails, what the requirements are for the animal control officer, what the training is that's needed to be in the animal control officer, and just making sure that that training is being met. Um, so there might be some, some dual training where I'm going to the training also to just have that understanding. Um, that, I think that that's gonna be one of the challenges and, and objectives for, for when he comes back or if we look to hire. Uh, and, and then again, I ju- I did, I just level funded. Um, I haven't, you know, we have the eight thousand plus for, for the wages, and I don't think we've ever, not since I've been the chief, have we ever used all that up. Uh, if we ever were in a situation where we maybe were looking to subcontract out, which we were a, a little while ago, and, and we were talking with the sheriff's department, uh, we'd be looking at probably somewhere around that seven thousand to eight thousand dollars, so that potentially could cover that type of a fee. Um, and right now we are contracting with, or we will be contracting very shortly with Athol, right?
Yes.
No?
I was gonna follow with that when you were done.
Okay.
And update the group.
Um, so right now, uh, while we're short-staffed, we are contracting with the Athol animal control officer. And what that is, is that's a twenty-five dollar fee for a minimum of three hours, so we're looking at every time we call an animal control officer from Athol to come here, we're reimbursing the town of Athol seventy-five dollars, just like we were, uh, Berniston would call for, for our ACO, and then we would re- reimburse, and, and that obviously goes for their equipment, their training, their time, their fuel use, and things like that.
And just to add to that, so we got that paperwork and, because we'd already kind of discussed it all and everything, we just move forward and execute the agreement, so. For the balance of this year, um, I believe it's through the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
Um, we'll contract Athol, and then we'll go from there.
Yep.
It seemed like a better option versus the sheriff's office for the balance of this year till we sort out what we're doing, and it's what we,
Yeah, I mean, since, since we've done this, I mean, we have used them once, and it was seventy-five dollars. You know, I mean, seventy-five dollars as opposed to if we were contracted out, maybe it's two hundred and fifty dollars every two weeks, where we didn't even spend that two hundred and fifty, we only spent seventy-five, so. I think that that's the best way to go, ultimately, I think the best way to go is to have our own. But in the, while we're in this phase here, this is the second best option.
Chief, have you had any conversations on a timeline of when, uh, a decision would be made?
We're hoping to know something soon, uh, I recently received a message from, from him, and I, I've, obviously I'm not gonna give the details, but we should know something here, hopefully, um, within another couple months, I'm hoping.
Okay. The only reason I, I ask is if it, um, if we are to end up looking to hire a new ACO, I'm assuming there'll be additional trainings, uh, certifications that would need to be, uh, gained by that person. Uh, I'm, I'm not optimistic that, uh, somebody's gonna come in with all of the credentials needed to perform the ACO, uh, role. So, but we don't have a line item for future trainings or anything, so just to keep that in mind, if we're, if we find out before we finalize the budget, maybe we wanna revisit that line item and see if there's something for, uh, training.
Sure, Select Ambassador Ash, I actually thought about that, and honestly, my thought was, is that by the time we hire somebody, by the time we find out what the situation's gonna be, we're probably gonna be pushing early spring-ish. By the time we put it out, we hire, we, we vet the person, go through the backgrounds, all that, I don't even know what the training all entails. I, I'm kind of leaning more towards just go with FY twenty-four, use Athol, and start the hiring process, have a better understanding, so when I come back to you guys in FY twenty, to do FY twenty-five, then we would, I would probably say, you know, we're gonna be looking at forty hours, sixty hours, eighty hours of training. That, that was kind of my thought process, so.
Thank you. Questions on the ACO budget? Okay, excellent, thank you, sir.
Excellent, thank you, guys, thank you for having me.
So Chief Wonka, uh, Fire Department is at a incident on mutual aid, so unavailable tonight. So we will postpone that unless there's anything anybody had questions on that we want to note for, for Chief at any time, but, we'll schedule him for a future meeting to go through the budget, and that'll be Fire Department and EMD. The FCC IP will be next year when we get that assessment detail, which brings us to tree warding. Come on up, sir. Fantastic. Pretty good. For eight thirty, we'll see you.
Uh, this is a short work, kind of, you know, we trim trees, we take bad trees out, we replant them. You know?
Any questions?
Yeah, there's not a lot to it. You know, it's a, it's a short service to the residents as we are. We trim trees as needed, we did a lot of trimming this past year, minimizes power loss, um, stuff like that. If, if trees gotta come out, we take them out, we'll do a tree hearing. We took a few out this year, uh, probably the big project we did was at the police station, though. Uh, we cleared the whole hillside, so now we have better view from the road. And we'll be replanting that, hopefully this spring. The only real challenge we faced this past year was the drought. Drought was tough, but, uh, we did, uh, hedgerow sixteen bushes, five more trees at, at the Park Street Park. We did five trees on the sidewalk project between Pratt and Amadon, and out of all those plantings, we only lost one, which is pretty miraculous, in my opinion. We also got the, uh, with the highway, we got the grass growing at the cemetery, which, I mean, it's a pretty big accomplishment if you're not familiar with that kind of stuff. It's a lot of watering, it was a lot of time watering, so next year we'll just keep doing the same kind of stuff, we got a bunch of plantings lined up for the spring. Works out good in the spring, Glenn allows us to, to do a lot of it with the highway, which is huge, because if we didn't, we'd be contracting out the services. It would triple the costs, um, we're able to get a lot more planted just by using in-house services. So that helps. So we're gonna level fund everything in the budget, uh, the only thing we wanna do is we wanna add a two thousand dollar line item for police details. That'll give us about five days of details for the year, so. That's about all I have.
Questions?
What would you envision the details?
What's that?
Kind of situation?
Uh, anytime we gotta do trimming or any kind of work on certain roads, uh, the police chief requires details, and it's a really good idea for safety. North Street, parts of Mountain Road, uh, Moore Street, Pratt Street River Road, and we got a big trimming job coming up this year for North Street, so that'll probably occupy four days right there. Other than that, everything's level funded.
I just had one, uh, request, is you talk about continuing with new tree plantings.
Yep.
Um, and I know you have, you know, you have the budget to be able to put so many trees per year. I've talked to a few people about, you know, because I had requested a tree, you know,
Yep.
being, I've taken a bunch of old and, uh, dying trees on my property. Um, and I talked about how you have a program to replant, and a lot of them had no idea that that was a thing. So I would just suggest that maybe, uh, you know, a couple of times a year, twice a year, throw something in the around town, you know, if you're, of what you're doing. Just a little, a little memo, people, uh, after these, uh, the reading earlier tonight, or the, people do read it, eighty-two percent responding back saying that they,
Yeah, we could certainly put something in the around town.
Yeah, just to say, you know, like, what, what is, uh, what are, what's available to them.
Right.
And, you know, what are the options, and how do they access that if they want something like that? You know, maybe they have bladed trees on their, on their property that need to come out, or they have some that are, uh, in the tree belt that are deteriorating sidewalks, and they want those gone, and, you know, how do they get a tree replaced?
Sure. Yeah, we actually had one, uh, this year on Pratt Street, wanted a replacement, and, uh, we went and looked at the property, and it just didn't fit for the grass belt, so. We had already ordered the tree, we gave it to them, they planted it in their backyard, nothing we could do for them. We mobilized it there, they planted it, it did great, so. We were already booked for, I think we have sixteen plantings booked already for this year, coming up in the spring, so. That'll take up a little time, unless we got residents to help.
You mentioned replanting at the PD?
Yep.
After the trimming?
Yep.
What does that look like, roughly?
Just, there's gonna be three smaller decorative trees going in on the great lawn part of it, I guess you would call it, so you could still see over or through those trees to the police station. We're working with Chief Holst on that.
Excellent.
Details.
Uh, other questions?
No.
And you thought you were gonna be the quickest one, no, go ahead.
We had, we had a couple issues with damage, but,
Of the cemetery, how's that done?
With a fire truck.
With the fire truck?
Yeah. Yeah, we worked with Chief Wonka on that, and, and, uh, that was all Glenn, you know, just scheduling us to go up and water a lot. Yeah, but it worked, so, must be something in those fire tanks, I guess, I don't know. I don't know.
Good for growing.
We had a little bit of damage on some of the planted trees that we did this year. So that was kind of a, a setback, but, um, you know, we trimmed them up, replaced the watering bags three rounds, I think, after they weed whacked them, and, but, uh, it's all right, we'll get through it.
They're still standing?
Still standing, and, uh, I actually have a little hope for the one that looks dead, but we'll see what happens in the spring, you never know.
Just to build on what the tree warden's speaking about, a few years ago, when he took this position, and you all were having tree hearings with the tree warden, there were residents who expressed concern that trees always came out and they never went back in. So he made that commitment that we would start a replanting program, and you all funded the, the budget, and so he's made good on that progress, on that promise and has made progress. Um, I think the challenge has been not everybody is buying as a community into this, and so we are seeing damage on the trees. And that does make this a little harder, a drought on top of that made it exponentially harder.
The drought was tough.
But when you're trying to do that and the, the bags are being sliced, or the branches are being snapped off the trees when they're already struggling, so. Um, I think we, we need to find ways to partner more with our neighbors as we do this to make this, these are community investments. These trees belong to the public, and so if they can help us watch them and, and let us know when there's an issue so that we can, um, make sure they survive that first year, I think it furthers your investment. Absolutely. We could use their help.
Yeah, if you see an empty bag, fill it up. You know, it's not hard.
I'll just second what Scott said. I mean, it's been a hot topic over the years, right, about replanting particularly, not just taking away, and getting some information out there, you know, just on like, hey, you know? And maybe this is a good time, you know, looking back at, hey, we did Park Street Park, we got these trees, you know, a little photo or two. And then talking a little bit about that, you know, in the coming year, you know, experienced drought and things like that. If you are near new plantings and, you know, you want to help us with it, these are the things you can do to help.
Yeah, communication's key.
And please keep an eye out, because we've also had these challenges that, you know, make this hard. And it's maybe just kind of advisory, you know, as a, I don't want to say footnote, but as a lesser point about the good thing of what we're doing.
Well, and to get back to what Brian said earlier, I'd have to look back at the numbers, but I'm really confident over the last two years, we've replanted more trees than we've taken down.
Yeah.
So I think we're at the plus minus is looking pretty good for the last two or three years. And again, none of this, none of these numbers can, could continue to be accomplished without the Highway Department helping and allowing us to work it in there, too. I mean, obviously, it helps the marriage between the tree ward and the highway. I work for the highway. But Glenn has been very generous with our time, you know, helping out. So that can't go unnoticed, or these numbers would not stay like this. The planting alone would triple or quadruple if you contracted the service out, rather than us going and just planting the trees.
You talk about the plus minus ratio. I mean, in an optimal world, I'd love to see a two-to-one ratio, you know, two going in for everyone coming out, or three-to-two ratio, just to build up, you know?
Yeah. I bet we're at least three-to-one right now.
Really? Excellent.
I don't think we've taken down that many trees in the last two years.
Okay.
Not counting the ones for the sidewalk project that was necessary, that was out of our control. In order to do the sidewalks, that had to come out.
Right.
So, yeah, I could get those numbers together, though.
Yeah, just to keep that on the high-end plus side.
Yeah.
It'll have a positive impact in the long run.
Absolutely.
The more we can put in.
Hopefully, it already has.
Yeah.
So.
Definitely. I think the perception before was dozens to zero.
Take, take, take.
We'll take even.
Yeah.
Even odds are great.
Very good. Other comments, questions?
Nope.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Next up, highway.
I'm happy to let somebody open, sir. I got other business after that. So a lot of people will leave.
Okay. And we will, water, wastewater. Could not come tonight. No, they could not make it tonight. So we are also going to reschedule that. And so Town Clerk is not here, so we'll skip that one. So Conservation Commission. Mark, you're representing, correct? Come on up. And this is from last meeting, it's in the last meeting packet. It's going to be in General Government. Yep. It's going to be page 216 and 217.
Having never done this before.
Yeah, well, definitely. So normally, what we like to do is go through kind of highlights of the current year and challenges, you know, of this year, and then talk a little bit about what the goals and initiatives are you trying to target next year.
I'll start with the first challenge, and that is that David Bruhl, who's been the chairman for, since forever, is giving up the chairmanship. And at the last meeting, he had surgery, and he's going to stay on the board, the commission. But when we said, brought that up at the meeting, the other members all turned and looked at me and said, "Mark."
Suddenly, you're nominated?
So I'm Mark Blatchley, and I guess I'm the chair of the Conservation Commission. However, I will say that although everybody who's on the commission is relatively new, they've all pitched in and taken areas of responsibility, and they're living up to them, and getting things done. And I'm quite happy with the work we're doing. So you can see, if you've got this sheet that we provided or put together with Brian, we built a parking area, and that involved clearing and getting bids. And I want to really thank Brian's, all his help, and Glenn, and all his help, and everything that's been done there. We now have a parking place that we no longer have to listen to the state say, "You can't park on the side of the road," like that. So now there's a parking place, and there's a kiosk up that soon will have a map, and will place maps for people to take with them. And there's additional signage that's going to go up so that people don't drive past that driveway saying, "What is that driveway there for?" But anyway, that's the new parking area. We've also carried out cleanup events. We had a road cleanup in the spring, and we had a trail cleanup in the fall. And I've got now a list of about, oh, a dozen folks that all have put in volunteer time and are open to volunteering either as individuals or as part of a group effort. As part of the clearing of the parking lot, by the way, we also supplied seats, little stump seats for the elementary school outdoor classroom, and some tree cookies, basically they're thin slices of tree trunks. And I know the kindergarten used them, but I don't know what they did with them. But they have, they have now about a dozen of those. We also assisted in library gardens, helping out pollinator gardens there. So anyway, additional things there, you say the conservation area, mostly, my focus up until now has been solely on the, well, not solely, but mostly on Poplar Mountain, and keeping the trails open, keeping people involved, keeping the blazes up, taking care of various and sundry questions about what is or isn't our property. The other major thing we've spent a lot of time doing is anytime somebody has a building permit for a structure that is within 200 feet or 100 feet of a waterway, a swamp, a body of water, a wetland that's protected under state law, they have to come to us, and they have to say, "Well, this is what we're going to do, and this is how we want to do it." And we say, "Well, you've got to have this in place, and you've got to have that in place, and you can do it this way according to the way the state law is." We've had a couple of problems with real estate agents selling property and not telling people that they were within a protected zone, and what people wanted to do wouldn't work. And other people who have gotten permits to do things and then had contractors that didn't quite follow directions, all those concerns have been dealt with as best we could. But that's a major focus. So we have to go out and look at the sites that fall within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. And then people have to come to our meetings, and they have to file reports, paperwork, RDA's and NOIs, and have us set conditions for them to do the work. So we want to continue in doing these things. And we want to increase, we actually started looking at the idea of increasing educational opportunities for the community. Last year, but this year, we want to make it actually happen, where we have somebody come in and speak at the library or here at the senior center for an event. We want to offer some specific guided hikes. I've been in touch with several people who are naturalists and birders and animal trackers and would like, you know, who would be willing to. And we've, these would do things where we have to pay these people to come in, because these are experts in the area. We want to do the cleanups on the road. It's getting, again, I get out there along Old State Road, and I don't know how many other areas other people look at, but trash starts to build up over the year where people just decide, you know, "I'm finished drinking this, finished eating this," whatever, out it goes. And although we have changed the character, somebody figured out some of the things we were finding a large quantity of, and the character of what's appearing on the side of the road has changed. So anyway, we'll do cleanup in the spring, get some guided hikes going, more trail cleanup, another trail cleanup day, and continue when everybody, anybody's got a building permit to meet with them, look at the site, review what's needed for doing it safely, protecting the water following the state law. Let's see, anything else in mind? I'm looking at a few possible ways of trying to assist the people who sell property or are getting ready to do building. Some ways we can get people more aware of what they have to do according to state law to protect the water. And I'm not sure what, there's an association, a statewide association, a conservation commission, and there's been some ideas and some discussions that I've heard there. Also, looking at other ways to get landowners and contractors to abide by the conditions that they agree to. And just try and find what are ways we can get people to feel, "Oh, yeah, I really need to pay attention to these things that I said." I would do. So you can see there, everything else is, anyway, that's it, all I got, all I got to say.
Thank you. That was good.
Questions?
Questions? And then I know there's the budget piece, which is, you know, significant piece, probably there's some questions, but I think you talked to some of the goals, so.
Yeah, my question was going to be related to the budget portion of it.
Okay.
I think we all have the same question.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, fire away.
My question was going to be, what sort of services are we outsourcing, or how are we utilizing the new line item for $10,900 for trail maintenance? I know in the past, there was a lot of volunteer, there was hikers associations that would blaze trails and maintain trails. I'm assuming that this is going to be something that we're taking on and outsourcing and paying somebody to do, but I just would like some explanation on the just shy of $11,000. The other line items make sense, you talked about them in the narrative, you know, the education, the trainings, the services, the consulting, those all make sense to me. They're new line items, you want to enhance all the services. But if you could touch on a little bit about the trail maintenance and how that money would be utilized?
Just the question of completing some of the trails that are on some difficult terrain. If you're familiar with the conservation area, the terrain is gently uphill, and then it levels off, and there's a large level area, and then it goes not vertically, but very steeply up. And at one time, there were two trails up and connect across the top. And we've discontinued some of that because we don't know where our boundaries are. And the survey is part of, or the completion and marking of the survey is part of the capital requests, because the survey determines everything that we do. You know, are the trails too close to this? Are we going to have to move a trail over 10 feet? I mean, completely clear it, erase the blazes, put new ones up. When we get to the hill, going up on top is very, very nice. It's really nice to get up there and sit and look out. Where, can we get all the way across, and can we make the trail on the other end, get it back in service, so it's a reasonable trail? Building those trails, it's going to take some work. It's going to be basically using the land and the stones that are there to make a, you know, a safe passage for people to get up there. So that's part of that. And there's also the question of dealing with a couple of sections of trail that tend to overgrow seriously. They're under the power line, and they sort of become tick city, and we want to find a way to clear those out a little bit so that you can walk your dog through there. And I think our total was nine ticks in a 30-foot distance on the dog. So, and one of the neighbors walks his dog out there up to that point, and he doesn't go any further than that. He's just said, "Nope, I'm not going to do it." And we really need to find a way to keep that open, and whether it's getting chipping done. There is some, I'm not sure if people are aware, but the power company is supposed to widen its cleared area, and if we can get them to supply us with chips, and then we need at that end, we can do something. And again, there's areas of wetland up there that we have to be concerned about, but completing those trails is a major, major thing.
So is that something, just out of curiosity, does that, is that a short-term sort of line item in that dollar amount, say, for a year, two years, three years, to accomplish what you're looking for? And then, or do you anticipate that size of a line item for perpetual maintenance of all trails?
No, I think that line item would decrease over time as we took care of the completion of the white trail. As we possibly found a way to go up top over to the other side of the hill on our, just a parcel on top of the land, on top of the hill that was added to the original. And there's some nice places over there for a sunset, but there's no trail. And if we can get an additional trail through there. Also, the other question that comes up is the removal and containing of invasive plants, which, again, possibly one of our hikes will be somebody coming in, leading a hike, showing people what are invasives, and how can we remove them, and how can we, you know, deal with invasive plants? Because there is, there's a buckthorn, and there's several other plants that one has to really work at getting cleared out. And some of those are on the power line.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Concerns?
I have a non-budget related question.
Go for it.
This may be outside of your purview, but we frequently hike up in the Irving State Forest, and I was wondering if you knew by chance when they might start clearing some of those trails to reopen them?
Well, we went through, I went, I was on a site visit with a state forester, and the, or a state forester. They have layers of foresters who deal with that issue, and so they're supposed to be moving ahead, and we've gotten the paperwork from it. It's a different kind of process, because it's forested state land, and so they basically can go in and do it, but they're going to go in and work on the picnic areas and things like, and camping areas. I don't know, I didn't get up into the upper trails area, and I'm not sure how long that's going to take them to do, because I know that their priority is the picnic areas, where it looks like the Mother Nature created jungle gym on the other side of the ravine, and the camping areas.
Okay.
Some of the trail looks the same way.
Yeah, as I say, up on Bear Loop and... Bear Loop and up on Pinnacle, it's completely impossible.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I have a map of some of those, and I looked at some of that, and we went out and we walked around for an hour or so. Because I know that their priority is the picnic areas, that where it looks like the Mother Nature created jungle gym on the other side of the ravine, and, and the camping areas.
Okay.
Some of the trail looks the same way.
Yeah, as I say, up on Bear Loop. Bear Loop and up on Pinnacle, that's completely impossible.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I, I have a map of some of those, and I looked at some of that. And we went out and we walked around for an hour or so, and looked at a number of places.
Okay.
Before you go, we have one more, I think. Are we good with this?
I was just going to call attention to that blank line item.
Okay, go ahead.
Me too. So there's a line item that just is a call out, like a TBD for a conservation agent. And the, as Mark started off the earlier conversation, we've lost some institutional knowledge, or we're losing some institutional knowledge on the conservation commission, but we have a very energetic and motivated board right now who's learning all of the rules. And I think what we've come to realize that some professional services to help us with the Wetlands Protection Act enforcement is, is helpful. And so, FERCOG has been working with the towns to look at the potential to have like a, a shared conservation service. You all agreed to use some of our DLTA funding back at the beginning of the year to, to look into that. We haven't gotten the report from that yet. So we've just put a call out that, we're waiting on the report from FERCOG. If it's something that's favorable to the town, we may want to address what that looks like so that they could have access to a professional support service like FCCIP. But we just don't have a presentation to bring to the Concombre, to the Slipboard at this time. So.
Okay. The only other one was, before you go, Mark, is there was a request for a Poplin Mountain Conservation Area gift fund?
Yeah. Well, as we've increased our publicity by writing articles in the around-town, you know, we've constantly been asking people not only to volunteer time, but, you know, we'd like to volunteer something else, you know, to put together, you know, donate some funds for a bench up top there, or is an overlook, it's a really nice place for a person to sit down and chill, as opposed to sitting down on a rock ledge with your feet dangling over a, you know, a 40-foot drop.
Nope. I'll dangle with you, they won't.
We'll take the bench.
Yeah, move the bench back, let the kids lean over the edge.
Absolutely.
I'll be with the kids.
Anyway, so the question is, what if somebody says, here, here's some money for a picnic table? Or one of my dreams is to put an accessible trail across at the level of the parking lot gradually over behind the farm with a connector to the yellow trail on the other side, which of course is not possible to make accessible, but at least would allow people to go over there, meet somebody who had hiked around, come back at, somebody could donate towards that. But they can't if we don't have a place to put the money.
Concerns?
I have no concern.
None?
Is recommended boat language in there?
I was actually looking for it in the packet. For PNA.
I made a motion to establish a gift fund for the Poplin Mountain Conservation Area for use by the conservation commission to receive donations and gifts to expend on the ongoing care, maintenance, and improvements in the conservation area.
Thank you, Bill. Second.
Before the vote, I actually realized I do have a question. Is there a reason or a benefit to making this specific to that area versus a general gift fund for the conservation commission? And then people can target their donations to a specific project? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
Yes, I guess we did this way because right now the conservation commission has no other properties that they oversee.
Okay.
Then I have no.
We can always change that later, okay?
That could be changed in the future, if you want to give us some more land to take care of. You know, I have my eyes on that land across the road that was part of the farm too, but, you know, whatever.
Okay.
We'll see where that goes.
Good enough for now, for me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark, appreciate it. With the finance committee, we want to entertain a motion to take a 10-minute recess and resume after. All right, I'll move the week recess and resume the meeting at 9:10 PM. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, welcome back, resuming at 9:15, joint meeting with the floor board and the finance committee. Fortunately, Chief Wonka is back, so Chief, you are up next there. We'll put you in the hot seat, or maybe the cooler seat.
Yeah, no, it was cold out there.
So circling back, we'll go to fire and EMS. Which is three, four in our packet, or in our budget book. Chief, similar as usual, just kind of talk through FY23 highlights, challenges, and then goals initiatives for 24.
The highlights and challenges were, we strive to keep all the apparatus and equipment in top working order throughout, through weekly, monthly, and yearly preventative maintenance, upkeep, and beautifications of the stations continued throughout the summer. We've done a little bit of work around there. Members of the department continue to train with our counterparts throughout the county. We actually were very successful this year in establishing a countywide wildfire crew to combat brush fires throughout the state. And we continue to attempt to remain fiscally and financially responsible to taxpayers even during these financially trying times with, I'm sure everybody's aware. Goals and initiatives for the upcoming year are exploring more ways to reduce our carbon footprint while saving energy costs in both stations, weatherization of the buildings, and exploring and reducing chemical products to ensure our compliance with OSHA. So part of that was through the OSHA compliance, really kind of highlighted the fact that we have a whole bunch of like cleaning products and all that kind of stuff. So we're trying to consolidate, condense, and bring that under control. Any of the, there really wasn't a huge amount of budget changes other than the drastic increase in electricity costs and oil delivery costs.
As you can see. Questions, comments, concerns?
There was an email, Brian, because you did increase the electricity, the electricity line item from what was submitted originally, okay.
Yeah, I touched on that earlier that I kind of, I take responsibility for the 50% increase.
I apologize. I was, I was kind of taken back when I got the first national grid bill. It's pretty much in line with the ever-source bills now, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, whichever one you got first, the other one's not far behind, but about the same.
I didn't, EverSource didn't increase too, too much, did it?
They're going about the same.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they are. Then I guess you haven't seen it yet.
No, I have not seen that.
Next one will be, next one will be.
So I mean, really, the only increase is electricity, the phone and internet cable bill, that went up. I did, I did decrease the line item for fire wells. That one has been historically over-budgeted each year, so we turned back a considerable amount of money. So we, I reduced it by $500 this year, along with, the other reduction was through the, the county dues on the radio antenna maintenance that has kind of plateaued, and we're in the processes of starting to phase that line item out. And then there's an increase of $2,000 with the pump ladder and hose maintenance testing, that, that came in. Everybody's starting to put the fuel surcharges on there when fuel got cost, and turnout gear. The turnout gear increased considerably. Underneath the, the emergency medical services, there really was no reduction in ambulance services this year, and everything else was, else was just flat-budgeted from last year.
The fire department expenses and, and equipment lines at 25, looks like historically we haven't hit that. Is that just kind of because they ebb and flow a little?
Yeah.
In terms of what needs it and what each year?
Yep.
Other questions, concerns?
Just for consistency, when you take out the electricity and the oil, which you can't, nobody can control those, they're, they're up and everybody knows it, your total increase is a little over 2%, so. At least, I'm not a mathematician, but that's how it looks to me.
I, I believe you're right.
Okay, and then emergency management department?
Emergency management department was level funded. I, I had forgotten to actually do the highlights and challenges for that, but as we all know, COVID was a, over the last three years, COVID was a highlight, a challenge, and, and interesting time in our lives, to say the least.
Are you, probably a foreteller question, but are you seeing it kind of stabilize, calm down at that level?
I would like to say so, but I think the numbers are on the rise again, as we start buttoning up for the winter and the cold months. We're starting to see an increase in, in those, our, you know, the respiratory viruses and cold, we're starting to see, starting to see an increase in that kind of stuff again, so. I don't know whether it's people are getting relaxed and not wearing masks, or, you know, that, but there is, there is an increase in, in, in numbers again, so. I would encourage everybody to be diligent, wash their hands, use hand sanitizer, and wear their masks when they're in public.
Questions, concerns on you, B?
Nope.
Okay, and one other item for you, Chief, is the acceptance of the FY23 firefighter safety equipment grant.
So we were awarded, again, this year, we were awarded the Department of Fire Services Equipment Grant for, I believe it was $10,500. If my memory serves me correctly.
It is correct, that is correct.
If it didn't get too cold tonight at the fire, that, so we're gonna use that to offset the cost of a repeater to put in the rescue truck. So that will pay, I think those are, those are coming in just about $15,000, so it'll offset it. It'll only cost us about five grand.
Did you, did you have more radio questions now that he's here, or you got?
No, it's okay.
Okay.
It's 9:30.
You can, I'll field the radio questions.
No, it's okay.
I'm pretty well-versed on the radio.
Chief Holst did a great job in your absence.
I have a question. Police chief indicated that there was a tower or something going up, or antenna being put in the center of town?
There, there's been some discussions on a secondary site going here in town. I don't, I've had conversations with the radio system manager, and that's where they want to put one in to fill in the dead spot for us in the state. It would cover the Irving Center, Route 2 section. Whether that's gonna happen or not, I'm not 100% sure. I would love to be able to tell you that they're, they're gonna put one in, they're looking at repurposing one.
Height?
So they came out and actually looked at both the fire station and the town hall, and feel extremely confident that if they can, if we can carve them out some space in the, in the town hall for the equipment, it will not stick outside of the building. It will, the antenna will actually sit inside the cupola, so it will not be an eyesore to anybody on the outside.
Let's work that into our town hall RFP. Designed to make sure there's something to cover that?
So we, they climbed around up in there and took a look at it and said that it should fit in there, no problems. They didn't feel the copper roof was gonna cause it any issues at all, felt very confident that they'd be able to get the, that it would get the height that they needed. They originally talked about putting a 35 or a 40-foot monopole in between the two. And when we, when I showed them the buildings, they, they felt pretty confident that they could, they could stay within, inside of the building. They would just need some space inside that they would need to store their equipment. I'm sure if they decide to do that, then we'll be sitting before you with some sort of MOU with the state for that, so.
I'll make a motion that we accept the firefighter safety equipment grant program, grant in the amount of $10,500. And authorize Chief Phil Wonka as a signatory.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, and for budget, last but not least, Glenn, you've got the other half of the budgets.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Bite is more than 2%.
Thanks for the warning.
Highlights and challenges, highway departments worked on repairing a bunch of failed culverts, catch basins. We just, we completed the big drainage project on Mountain Road this year. I'm sure you've all driven by it. Very happy, very proud of the team and the crew for, for getting that done. Came out very well, and, and it works. We've had some good rain events since it was all in, no washouts to it. Followed the curbing down right into the catch basins where it's supposed to go. So that was a big highlight of it, too. You know, there's a lot of knowledge in the highway department, and I think that gets unnoticed by a lot of people. Challenges, supplies are still, still a challenge. Doesn't matter what project we're into, supplies are gonna be a challenge in the cost of them now. For goals initiatives, a couple of years ago, FERCog came out and did a complete inventory and assessment of all the stormwater management system. They were rated from good to fair to poor to need replacing now. One of those failed on Mountain Road this fall time, and it was a $7,000 repair to repair that 35-foot section of pipe with the head walls, paving, and compaction, the gravel and the compaction tools for it. You don't get what you used to out of $7,000 anymore.
Like your gallon of milk, or your pork chop.
So that's, that's gonna be a problem. It's gonna be expensive to do those, and if they're funded, we'll, we'll have a busy summer.
Was, just on the Mountain Road culvert, was that one of the needs replaced list?
That was one of the needs replaced. It's old metal corrugated pipes, they're just, they're rotting out on the bottom, and they're collapsing.
So we were warned.
We were warned.
That's all I'm getting at.
Yep.
Okay, I, I don't want to go back and look at that list, and how many said that?
Significant number.
That's my point.
So, significant.
Questions on the highlights, initiatives, goals, challenges, before we get into the line items?
Okay, significant budget changes. So we, we, Brian had talked about, we said we talked about adding a surveying line to get surveying work done out of, out of the way before we go to bid, before we go to do any project. Seems like every project we've come across, the road has not been recorded right. It's not an actual town road. It's a county road. It's a gult path. It's an ancient way. Ancient way.
You can't make this stuff up.
We have ancient ways.
No, you can't, that's why I had to ask. An ancient way.
Ancient ways.
I mean, who's gotta challenge that? I'd say it's ancient. It just is.
So, so we're looking to add a line, add a line for that. So in the past, there's been money approved for the highway roadwork improvement line for larger projects. When we did the Warner River Stratch and Street paving sidewalk project, the town, we'd stopped funding that because that was a huge project down there. That money helps us do these culvert repairs and catch basins, soil work, anything that comes up. The budget increase request for the line is so we can finish repairing, replacing the failed drainage system. The miscellaneous bridge repair line item has new requests also. We pretty much take care of the wooden bridge deck over, that goes over to Farley. We don't get much help from, from the abutting town. And after MAST DOT, bridge inspection, you know, does their stuff, if it's any minor repairs, we can take the money out of that line instead of the regular operating budget.
Glenn, is that a, as far as property line goes, is that a shared bridge?
Yes. One in Farley.
And the special article section, I know you commented on them, and it's obviously in your budget there, but it's not. I know we usually look at those as a group after separately, too, so, and we can talk about them, but we'll probably touch on them again in that, in that review.
So, and unfortunately, with, with our budget, some, a lot of them are shared, the fuels, you know, it's shared between all departments, but it falls under, under the highway one. So we've increased the gas line item. We've, new highway trucks were starting to buy gas jobs instead of diesel because of the cost of them and the repairs of them. They don't get great gas mileage, but they save us a lot of money in the long run. So the gas line's gone up on that, and just because of the cost of the gas and the fuel, those lines have increased. The highways, the survey servicing one was 25,000. I don't know if I'll go through these individual, or if I'm gonna shut up, and you're just gonna say, what about this line? And tell me what you like.
What was I looking for here? I'm just looking back at the list, so the streetlights, the fuel, yeah, is, is all encompassing, the cemetery we kept called out separately. I guess we have the fuel called out separately, too, but not the streetlights? Okay, whichever. I'd say we just, questions?
Unfortunately, all the increases are because of product, equipment, or vendor services have gone up significantly.
Hearing none?
Oh, I just say, you're somewhere around 6% or so. When you take out 100 grand, because things are falling apart and you have to fix them, you take out the 11 grand for, was that was for fuel? And, and, you know, surveying, there was time when I walked county roads from the old stump to the edge of the creek. Who knows where anything is, so you gotta have it surveyed. Take out that 25 grand, you're closer to 5 or 6%. So it's, you know, is what it is, everything goes up.
Yeah, agreeing.
Note, DOT was at Church Street Bridge for two days.
Really?
Well, don't necessarily have an update per se, but we've, but we, the administration and the community planner have been pursuing for a long time, funding from them for that bridge, even though we have the borrowing authorization, and we are progressing with the, with Westman Sampson. We're also, the team's actively pursuing it with the county tip and the state tip, I don't know, whatever. With all of that stuff to see if we can't get a portion or a, the entire bridge covered. So we're kind of going at it from both sides, and there's gonna be a tipping point at some point sooner or later here, where it's a decision on whether we go forward because we want it done, or we wait a little longer, knowing we could get it funded, and that's gonna be a decision point.
We're hoping to have an update end of February.
So, hopefully that's a good sign. Because we've been going through the steps.
Well, I was kind of looking at it, was it a good sign or a bad sign?
I think it's a good sign, but we'll see.
I wouldn't be surprised.
They've been checking all their boxes and putting all the forms in, doing, I mean, the team has, you know.
I wouldn't be surprised there, if they're inspecting again after the Jersey barriers have sat on there for a year, and then the traffic to see if it's worse.
Can be that, too. Next? Yeah, solid waste. That's you, too.
It is?
Hmm?
Yeah.
Okay, well, whoever wants to take that, then.
So, tried our best to keep most things level funded. There's a slight reduction in your county waste management district assessment. That's already known, that's been determined. Your three-year, all of our three-year contracts are up for renewal this year. So your three-year contract for waste management, collection, and hauling has been slated for either a negotiation to extend it for a year four, or we need to go out and do a competitive three-year. We, we tentatively had a meeting with Casella scheduled for last week. They had to be postponed, but we should have some initial information from Casella for the three-year to consider about what a year four could look like from their perspective. In your contract, for informational purposes, you would ask them what a year four would look like, and they had put in a escalator of 5%. So I've already factored that in, just for a placeholder. Anything goes, the costs have gone up a little bit, so I put a slight increase for there. Recycling disposal, I'm proposing that we can take it down a little bit. This is the first year that we've been paying under the new model. And every other quarter, we were receiving a check for our recycling. This year, the market has changed to be less favorable, and we are incurring costs, but the costs are far be manageable. So I still think what we've budgeted is sufficient. Trash disposal has been sufficient to date, even with the change in hauling locations. So everything else, I think we're, we're in good shape on. Slight increase for Maple Ave landfill. It went up slightly this year, but 16 should cover it for next.
So trash disposal, we have a lot of capacity in there, it looks like, though. Assuming we manage our volumes as we have been lately?
That was the result of you managing your?
Because it was higher, if we go back another year, right, and it's come back down to something more reasonable.
See, your cost per ton has gone up, so I think you're definitely gonna be in the 30s this year. But your, your tonnage has remained at what your historic levels had been. So I think we're back at the target area. We just have to continue to manage that. So that was good progress.
And what about the trash recycling other? You spent a lot the year before, but?
That was launching the sticker program, because we had to buy it in like a July timeframe, so it hit, and then we had to buy the That was launching the, the sticker program, cause we had to buy it in like a, a July timeframe, so it hit, and then we had to buy the renewals for the next year, so it hit twice in the same year. So it's gonna be about ten, five hundred dollars.
I see. Okay. So it might have capacity in the trash disposal if we need to bring it down a little.
Exactly.
Okay. Or if the negotiations or whatever. Other questions on waste management? This does not include any costs or potential needs in terms of our discussions around a recycling center.
Correct.
Or whatever site we may do down there.
Correct.
Other questions on it? Looks like they're good. I think that was the budget items for you sir, but then we've got a few others.
He's also got town buildings.
Cemeteries was in that budget, uh, the first page one, but if there was questions, I think it was level funded.
It was.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, that's in our, um. Is that in general?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. This is what happens when you don't bring your book to class.
About this one?
No, I have the documents, so go find it. It is on page two eighteen? With the package this week, I thought you went to a hundred and eighteen?
That's what it feels like.
I think it is, but down there. Alright. Building ground maintenance, that's two eighteen.
So largely, staff increases are, are just what the grading steps are, the change in longevity, eligibility, and then the change in the clothing allowance that you all discussed per policy. The other increases are related to the electricity and the, uh, other utilities. We um, have not had a preventive maintenance contract on our generator in the past year and we need to work on that this year and we talked about locking in a three-year. So we were budgeting a slight additional capacity. Um, the old budget that had been put into the, the book was based on fewer generators. With the library coming online and the wellhouse coming online, we added generators. So we need to increase it slightly. And I'm requesting a new line item for pest management. That is something that you all had discussed several months ago. We recently put one building on a pest management plan and it's looking like about twenty-five hundred dollars for the year. So I need to review the other facilities with the facility managers and see what else would be recommended for, for services like that.
The grounds maintenance, we've been way under budget. Is there a driver there or, I mean, should we be budgeting that high? The only forty and we spent sixteen, seventeen last year? Am I reading that wrong?
Yeah, only about halfway, half of that now, eight thousand.
Yeah, so I'm just curious.
Maybe that we have extra capacity there. Um, that contract's also up this year.
I said that contract's up too.
So we're gonna be re procuring a three-year contract. Landscaping, uh, I'm not sure who your vendor will be this year, so I would expect, I would expect that there's gonna be uh, an increase. Likely wouldn't be all of that capacity.
So, might be an opportunity to bring it down five or ten?
Yeah.
I just asked, cause everything's been up, so. If we can find some spots to come down, we need to, you know, I think, I think.
Absolutely.
We can't, we can't raise everything.
Right.
And something's gonna have to take priority at some point in this discussion probably, so if we can find places to take it down now.
Agreed.
What about um, electricity? And I ask this because last year, last cycle, we were over budget and budgeted flat. And then if we're adding fifty percent, are we missing that it's gonna be even more? Cause it was eighty-five, we spent ten something, eighty-five hundred.
Yeah.
And then we budgeted eighty-five hundred and now we just budgeted half again.
Correct. Do you want me to explain why?
Yes. I'll stop talking.
At the beginning of this meeting, you sold two buildings?
Okay, I'm done.
If you look at the narrative, that's where it was absorbed by.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right.
That was an anomaly.
I had no real to charge them, so I've been charging them there for the last year.
Yeah. Phone internet, you gonna tell me the same reason?
No, phone and internet is a, is a true thing, yeah. So we can make an adjustment.
Well, I thought we had phones and internet, but, uh, no, but we spent more than the new budget last year.
That?
Spent thirteen-five and we only budgeted ten-five this year.
So phone, um.
As long as there's a reason, that that makes sense.
Yes, we're gonna be re, uh, procuring the phone system. There was an increase that we had done the year before with the fiber optic line coming online. We had talked about dropping the commercial cable and, um, I need to re procure the phones.
How about heating oil? While we're on it. Same reasons going down, right? The other buildings?
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, I'm on a roll, I might as well keep going.
Yep.
And I'll assume others the same thing.
Right.
Okay.
Other questions? This budget has a lot of things that are townwide, say like generators.
Right.
Um, and then there's other things that are technically building specific and for the longest time, this budget has really just been town hall and uh, the historical building. Whether that's the right way you wanna continue to do this, that's a decision you all get to make, but that's what historically were in these line items, when those two buildings no longer had tenants or purposes. Those two buildings also fell into this group, so four buildings were sharing these line items. And so we're now back to the original two that has traditionally been funded out of here.
Because historical doesn't carry the historical building and all of the departments carry their own building.
Yes. And why, uh, I'm not.
I'm not gonna solve it tonight, but we should probably look at that.
When we do a chart of accounts, yes, please.
How, yeah, okay. Questions? I've asked enough. Okay, so we're, we're talking about potentially bringing down ground maintenance. Do you have an idea of how much you wanna reduce? Thirty? Gonna go down to thirty? Not reduce thirty.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you reduce it by thirty, we're, you're not gonna have any money.
I mean, we're procuring new, it's probably gonna go up, depending quite a bit, but.
So, I think it's gonna go up substantially. I don't think, I don't think you're gonna find somebody to bid it out the same that it's been bid out at for the last.
Not unless he's interested in it again.
Twenty years or how long, you know, it's been doing it for quite a while. Looking at the rates that his bid was and the going market rates, I don't, I don't know if you're gonna.
Save anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we wanna?
Do you agree? I mean, you're the.
Like I say, I, I, I think he's gonna rebid again, but.
What if he didn't? Do you think forty's the number or do you think that's too high? Do you think that's not?
I don't think it's probably enough.
Yeah, I was probably gonna say, okay, no.
Yeah, that's, if he's, if, if he's bidding again, you could probably drop it down, you know, twenty.
Twenty-five, twenty, yeah.
And be fine. Alright, but if it goes out to the general market to bid on it again, I don't think it's enough.
Right.
Leave it alone then?
I mean, we may have numbers for you in March.
Yeah, yeah, we'll come back to it, right, right. For now, we'll leave it alone.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, alright. Okay. So, for the joint meeting, we have three more things for Glenn. Um, I think at least, well, I think we have three if you're staying for Wheelock.
Sure.
At least Wheelock, I think we should talk about with, with you, the Wheelock um, street culvert replacement project. And then we can go to the other two if you wanna stay for them or not. So, um, review of bid documents for the Wheelock Street culvert replacement project. So this was, we received a fully funded grant to do that culvert. And it escapes me what the grant was.
Two culverts. An MVP money, or um.
It's not MVP.
One-stop money, uh, small, small, unrolled town.
Oh, small rural town.
Yep.
Culvert room, um, improvement projects, whatever it was. Um, so it, it is anticipated to be the full cost of the Wheelock Street culvert's replacement. Which had been designed or scoped before we got applied for the grant. It's on the capital, um, planning committee's radar as a FI twenty-four project. However, um, the engineering firm, Weston Sampson, is recommending to get that out to bid ASAP because of the costs. Continuing to escalate in costs and sooner we get it out ahead of the season, the, potentially the better the pricing. Is that the short summary of what?
Correct.
The driver is. Um, the anticipation of the hope is that it's a hundred percent covered by the grant, so. Guess the question is, do we wanna accelerate it and move it ahead of what would be normally in cycle maybe in the following year? And. It hasn't been discussed with the capital planning committee, cause this just came back since their last meeting, uh, from the engineer, so.
And the only high level, just timeline wise, we put this out to bid in January, you get them back in February, you're awarding by March. You're having initial kickoff meetings, you're not doing construction until summer. So, construction wise, you're talking tail end of FI twenty-three, first quarter of FI twenty-four.
Thoughts? Capacity to manage it?
Yeah.
That's a yes?
What's that?
That's a yes?
It's a yes.
And just one more high level on this. This was our first designed project that involved the new state standards for active stream crossings. So the culverts that we're proposing these have active flows that increase and decrease over, throughout the year, but they're constantly flowing. And um, it's not like the typical corrugated metal that Glenn was talking about underneath the, the highway. And so the, the standards for the state are much different than what we've ever been used to in town and these are the standards that we all have to put into every other project like this going forward. So Wheelock Street was selected because of its proximity to the mountain project, the brooks coming off of it. And also because it's a, it's a dead-end neighborhood that we could work with the residents and not disrupt traffic flows too greatly to get our brains around how this work, works. Because we will have many others like this to do in the, in the coming years. Um, so this is sort of a pilot project for us as well.
Glenn, does that culvert affect Route Two?
No. It, it runs down to it, it eventually runs underneath Route Two, yes, but not directly. They're not changing one on the Route Two, it's the two on Wheelock.
Okay.
Right.
We were at Capital, Capital Two A and they don't meet again until January fourth. So I don't know how that falls into the timeline of everything.
Well, actually, I think it, I'll ask you Brian, but based on what I see here, potential to put bid documents out on the eleventh.
Correct.
We meet again on the ninth.
Correct.
Actually, I think we all meet again on the ninth. So capital would have an opportunity to look at it the week before. We could meet on the ninth, I'm assuming they would just pre-register and central register all the bid requirements and then we could pull it if we needed to on Tuesday. Or release it on the ninth and it's ready to go for the eleventh.
Correct.
So. Unless there's any objection, I think that's a good plan.
No, I think that.
I think it makes sense.
Okay, so we'll get that on the capital agenda for the fourth, to give it an endorsement to, to go, go ASAP and. Anything on the bid documents so far? I mean, there'll probably be a few edits, I think they were still looking at, um, some. Review?
We're waiting for one final thing from the Army Corps of Engineers.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, so these are close, but they may not be quite final.
I think it was just a few notes to call out. Worst case, we could always issue them through addenda if we had to, but.
Okay. A few edits, just a look at them?
Not all of them, no.
Okay. So.
So revisit on the ninth?
Yeah, we'll try to come back with any feedback, any concerns and if it's major, get it to Brian ahead of time, we can have the engineer weigh in before the meeting, so we have it ready.
Okay.
If we have to postpone, we will, but.
Okay.
If everybody's in agreement, we'll move forward.
Perfect, thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Next one was recycling center proposal. Um, I don't know if you wanna stay for this, this is um, related to all the kind of things down at the highway. That we have been accustomed to being able to drop off and such is not quite compliant with.
Not at all.
DEP, we found out during this mattress ban, textile ban, conversations recently, so, um, it's basically closed anything but lever, leaves or, leaves or brush right now. Uh, and uh, just like brought upon a discussion with Glenn and Brian, said let's look at what it would entail to take some of the things that we've already taken in the past. Properly. And so, there's a cost to it, so if you wanna stay and listen for that. And then, uh, I think that's probably in and the snow, thawing has a cost to it, so. Recycling center proposal.
Hopefully the memorandum in your packet gave a high level of what we're proposing to do. So if we understood the, the last deliberation correctly, we want to explore an option where you could continue to receive as much of the recycling related items that we could do under the general permit. Um, so the focus was on scrap metal, white goods, appliances, uh, fluorescent lamps, e-waste, like TVs and, and computers. Tires, clean and dry mattresses, the gastric done the clean, and uh, leaves, brush, textiles, things of that nature. So, uh, all of those things can be done with a general permit. We do have site improvements that we need to do down at the, at the location if we were to keep it there. And we also have to be very clear with the hours of operation. So the, the current sort of open access free-for-all that has occurred for years, we need to. Put um, some limitations around because part of the permit requires you to let DEP know when the hours of operations are and that there's a staffing plan, there's policies that we have to put into place. So I tried to do some high-level uh, suggestions based on the conversations I've had with Glenn after we went back down and looked at the site about what would need to be done down there. Um, I know Glenn's actively pulling together some cost estimates that um, would inform what the improvements would look like, the cost to, to make. But I think once the physical improvements are in place, we've got probably a, a good fifteen, twenty-year life on a lot of this stuff. I don't think it's stuff that you're actively replacing. I don't know if you wanted to cover some of the estimates that you have.
Yeah, so we, we need two concrete pads, um, one to hold the roll-off dumpsters and one to hold the four twenty-foot Conex boxes. So we've got an estimate of just about twenty-nine thousand dollars for the two pads. We can do all the prep, prep work for the, for the whole site. Uh, we'll be able to do all that in-house and save the money there. The retaining walls that need to be built along the side of the, on the side of dumpsters and on the backside for the fall protection are about fifty-three hundred dollars in blocks. Contractor, vendor will deliver them and we'll be able to set them all. So we'll be able to do that all in-house also. Uh, the four twenty-foot containers are about twenty thousand dollars delivered. Uh, when we bought the other ones down at this garage, I think they were like twenty-four hundred dollars apiece. So they're about five thousand dollars apiece now delivered each. And they, they set them. So, so it's twenty thousand, fifty-eight thousand, or forty-eight thousand, fifty-eight, fifty-two, fifty-three thousand? Roughly, thirty, forty, fifty, fifty-five-ish.
Fifty-four. So the first was the pads. Second one is blocks you'll do, third one is Conex boxes set.
Yep.
And that's the scope and the rest of the groundwork would be done.
Done in-house.
Done in-house.
The only one that I don't have back yet is the paving part of it.
To pave the new route.
To pave the new route.
And then the building.
And then it'd have to be a shed out there, we'd have to put power out to it. Uh, we'd have to clear some trees, do the excavating to get the other part of the road into it.
But I think we should do that in phases.
Fair. But a high-level picture of what this is and what it would give us, right, for the whole group, I was like, I mean, we have a little bit in writing, but they don't have anything. Um, I don't think we included it. So, uh, if you drive, you know, next to the building, normally where you would turn or, and then, then go in, instead you would just go straight back there and there would be a loop that came back out where, where everyone's used to going back there, who has. That would be the exit. Um, so they'd have to blaze a new roadway in, um, to the right of where the current entrance is. So, for those opposite me, new road here, existing road would be the exit here. And uh, back there, there would be four Conex boxes on the higher elevation.
Yes.
Which one is white goods?
One would be white goods, one for e-waste, one for tires, and the other for clean mattresses. So that's the one that's still up in the air. To whether or not for mattresses, if Frank Manassal waste is gonna provide.
Right.
Uh, they could be providing some type of a roll-off dumpster that's covered.
Oh, okay.
So they can just hook lift and pull them out like a regular dumpster.
So maybe no cost for that one?
Correct.
Okay. And then, next to those, if you will, on the other half of the horseshoe would be two, uh, perpendicular would be two roll-offs. One for metal?
One for metal, one for bulky waste. And then there's.
Bulky waste would be town gen, would be, thank you, would be, I don't know.
Town building.
Town government, town buildings, it wouldn't be town residents. That's, that's for the bulky waste pickup day.
Yep.
Right.
And then that would be it.
And then it's so that pad that's down near for the roll offs is big enough for three of them, just in case it is like a, a hook and haul for, for the dumpsters.
And then it would require a shed to have an attendant, because we can only have it open for attendant hours. So that's, that's the change, it'll be scheduled hours with an attendant, so there'll be a, you know, either some changes or an employee cost to go with that, some part-time or something.
It's recommended that there's two employees out there for it, there'd be somebody in the attendant building at all times and then the second person assisting.
Which also then requires power and heat and lights and.
Yes.
So that's kind of the scope of what gets us, and then there'll be a leaf pile and a brush pile and.
Yeah, leaf, leaf and brush, yep.
So that gets us close to where we are. We're. And so costs, I mean, you're already probably at 60, it could be 100 and that's not a bill, you know, with the building and everything.
Probably easy 100,000.
And then paving.
Well, to get, to get power out, I don't know where we're going to have to go, how far into the building to get power. And then that, that'll be trench conduit, electrician.
So we're probably realistically north of 100, south of 200. Plus some ongoing staffing costs to go with it. So that's high level, I just wanted to.
Just to get started.
This is where we are, we can trim that back or change however we want, but that's just a starting point to talk about, so. Not to, not to decide anything tonight to just, you're still working on some of those other details and costs, just to get high level numbers. Firm that up a little more, but that's our current state, so.
Glenn, barring everything fell into place, how long would it take you to get it up and running?
I don't think it's so much us as it is the permit, is, I mean, we, we have, they, they issued us a permit number.
We have the EPA.
The EPA number, but it's not a permit for an active recycling center, correct? They said that could take up to a year?
No, that's the, that's the full.
Transport station.
Full transportation. No, the, it takes about a month and a half once it's all in. So, so the general permit is being applied for. The EPA registration for the fluorescent bulbs and there's another item, that's already been received. So, so I don't think the permitting will take too much longer. Yeah, I, I think we could have it done this winter permitting wise.
Per, permitting wise, construction wise, everything, it'd probably be a good couple of months. Because there's other vendors involved with it.
So if, if we funded something in the next fiscal year, maybe fall 23? Ish.
So is this being considered urgent or because Capital hasn't heard anything about it and?
We don't have numbers yet, we're still trying to develop, but this just came up three weeks ago, four weeks ago. So we don't have anything to present yet. We, I mean, the board hasn't even decided on what would that be? What, what do we want to do? Do we want to do all of those things we just listed? Do we just want to do, I don't know, white goods? Do we just want to do whatever, tires, you know, e-waste?
Okay, a question, because we have $8 million in capital requests, FY 25?
Four.
Four, 24. And that, I mean, there's, there's some pretty significant stuff in there and we're already pushing stuff out because of it. I mean, and so I'm just questioning if this is another $100,000 project. You gentlemen are talking currently getting it done soon-ish or, or now, it kind of sounds like. Or possibly within the end of this fiscal year. And so I'm just wondering where that funding would come from and how it fits into the whole capital scheme.
So high level, we needed to get.
I don't think anybody's decided on a timeline, I think Bill was just asking, what's the fastest that could be done? Just, I don't know, I don't, I don't think any of us have talked about timing, but that's not to say it's not. Something we'd want to do that soon.
We haven't explored funding yet because we don't know what direction you all want to go in. So I'm not saying that I've got $100,000 in the desk drawer anywhere. What I'm saying is that there is grant funding opportunities that do exist on the state level and some grants that we already received, they're, they're not large amounts, but in every other town that has a full on transfer station, they fund it through either the receipts that they get through the transfer station or through these grants. So I'm not saying that we don't just do this all in one fell swoop with a capital project, but it also may be a strategy for phasing and improvements over time and grant applications. But then unless we have a sense of the direction or the appetite from all of you as to where you want to go with this, it wouldn't make sense to pursue those. So if we get some feedback over the coming weeks about where you want to head, I can start looking into the funding opportunities and then present that back to Capital.
You know, in a lot of stuff, usually typically if you buy an appliance, they'll take your old one back for $25, $30. You know, TVs, e-waste is free and you've all had wanted it to be free for a long time now. There's other towns that are charging anywhere from $20 to $50 a TV, depending on the size of them. We pay seven, around $7,000 a year, I think it was, in electronic recycling and we don't collect a dime for, for any of that.
I think that's, some of these things are why it's just right now it's a limbo, like what cost do we want to bear? What do the residents want to pay for? What's the timeline to do it? What's the urgency? What's the interest? You know, I think, I think the only thing that if I remember correctly, the board talked about being a priority to try to maintain as much as we can was leaves and brush for now. Everything else was kind of TBD on developing this. And that one, other than the fact that we'd need to schedule open hours where we have someone there is probably the one we can manage a little better without a lot of cost. Everything else comes with some cost.
So is, is the finance committee in capital planning aware that this is a result of DEP's finding?
They don't know it exists until about five minutes ago.
Okay. So Glenn, can you explain what, what occurred?
Yeah, so it, it all came about with the whole textile recycling of, you know, what you can and you can't throw away in your trash now. It has to go into certain containers. The, the board talked about having clothes drop off boxes down at the highway garage or somewhere through town. Mattresses now are, are huge textile, they have to be clean, they have to be dry, they can't be stained, they can't be dirty. So we asked for a site visit to come down and look and see what that would entail. And they says, oh my God, you collect this, you collect this, what do you do with this? You don't have a permit for any of it. So that's what opened up this can of worms of we're running a, a transfer station that's not permitted.
Recycling center.
In recycle, yeah, recycling center. So we were asked that you should just stop until the town figures out what they want to do. So we cleaned up everything, we had the freons recycled, we had the white goods gone, tires picked up, e-waste picked up. All of fluorescent bulbs were picked up last week. So there's nothing out there now except leaves and brush. So again, it, it all depends on the level of what the town wants to do where it could cost nothing, we take just leaves and brush. And when you get new tires, you pay the $4 wherever you get your new tires done and you don't bring your tires home. Then you don't have to get rid of them. Like I say, it's all in whatever level the town wants to provide service of. This could be real cheap or probably close to a couple hundred thousand dollars to get started.
So we're back at square one, trying to figure that out, basically. So.
And people have adjusted, they, they've adjusted to us not taking it and they're taking it elsewhere right now.
So I think we, you know, I think to kind of what you said, what you asked, we, we should send around some disinformation to Capital and to formally to FinCom and let them know that this is discussion we're talking, you know, this is an item we're talking about. We don't have all the numbers, but it's potentially on the horizon. I don't know that we can give Capital anything better than that right now, but.
We always take ballparks, I say it all the time. For us to be able to put, knowing the level of requests we have this year and for us to be able to put things in there, even just a ballpark of, we think it's going to be around $250,000. Then we can at least look at it and get it in the schedule and get it in a plan and we at least know it's coming rather than just coming to a meeting and be like, oh yeah, by the way. And, and I know I would ask in the future if there's stuff that you think for FinCom that you would like to discuss with us, if you can send us that information ahead of time, even if it's just a possibility, then at least while we're sitting here at the table, we've had the chance to review and we're aware of it. Because this kind of feels like it's out of left field and you're asking for us to weigh in, but we don't have the information or anything to be able to take the time to review and weigh in on it.
Well, left field and ballpark, those kind of go hand in hand, I think.
You can say that. Glad you said it. No, I, I, yes, it absolutely is left field because. There went 3 million of requests off the table. So absolutely, and I only like scheduled this way, one from efficiency and two because I wanted you to hear it too. I didn't expect anybody to weigh in, even us, we don't have all the facts. It was just an informational session, if you will, of FYI, this is evolving right now. If you have questions you want answered, let us know, but we don't have anything more than that. I'm not looking for anything more than, more than that. We, we, we did do a disservice not giving you the same memo we had, so we'll, we'll fix that next time. Tried to rearrange the schedule differently than we normally do it and so in that incorporated more stuff in our discussion than normal. So we'll, we'll improve on that. I kind of blind sided Brian on that, I was like, here, put this in the middle of the budget and this in the middle of the budget and this in the middle of the budget, so I'll take blame for that one. Appreciate the feedback. Any questions though right now, well, beyond what you've.
I forwarded everybody the memo.
Hey, it's missing that ballpark. But speaking of the ballpark, so can we, as you're going to work on that, if you get more information before the January 4th Capital meeting, we can include either we think it's less than 200 right now? Or whatever he adds up plus 25% contingency?
Okay.
I think is a ballpark.
And also start putting together the funding sources that we have already set aside for recycling and, and what potential grants exist, like you said, the, the state programs, so.
And Glenn, if there's, you, you gave some numbers on, you know, buying the Conex boxes and the, you know, various slab, you know, slab work and site work. If we were to take an approach of piecemealing this and, you know, only taking certain things and building it up over time, is there ways to step up the site work? Or is it, does it make sense to do all of the prep work now?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's, all, all the prep work should be done first.
Okay. That's what I figured the answer was going to be.
Because once, once you get in here, because this has to work from the inside out.
Right.
In order to prep this all the right way the first time.
Okay. Maybe it's a dirt road for now, if that's possible, right? And pave it later or whatever, all those kinds of things.
I think a lot of that had to do with ADA, the paving through it.
Okay. Complete streets. Got it?
Just like to, to display and say, I would encourage you to continue looking at what's it going to cost and how you might accomplish it. Because we've all seen other towns where taxpayers go to town meeting and say, well, I'm going to raise this budget by $50,000. That's too much taxes, too much and off and off you go. But then each one of them individually has to hire somebody to come and take away the trash and do whatever it is. And when it costs them $250,000 again, instead of paying the $50,000 ahead of time, you can work all together and get it done. So my thought is if we can.
If the people want to maintain the level of services we have and it's up to them, it'll be cheaper to do it all, do it together as a group here as, as a team instead of saying, well, just take it wherever you want, good luck. And it'll end up costing everybody more in the long run, I think.
Seems like one we can put a concise budget around and offer it to taxpayers. You know, here's a solution, you want to fund it, fund it.
Yeah.
Eventually, when we get there.
Yeah.
Anything else on that one? Okay. Question regarding backup snow plowing practices. Again, you don't have this one, it's probably, it's, it's maybe a budget impact, but it's just something to be aware of. It may adjust a budget, I don't think it's going to be significant, so. Can stay a little from the.
Doesn't say it's more about procedure than cost.
Yeah, I guess, because it wasn't, well, it could have had cost. It doesn't, it doesn't now, I guess, so. Because it doesn't really have cost right now, so. Do you want to adjourn or do you want to stay?
Should I adjourn?
Sounds like there was a notion to adjourn the joint meeting and continue the SLIF board meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you all for the long haul.
Thank you for your time tonight.
You have a good holiday, we'll see you next year. Glenn, regarding backup snow plowing practices.
Yeah. So a, as you know, we've, before COVID, we've never had a, a backup plan for, for plowing. We fell short last year a couple of times with people out. We managed to scramble some, some help together and still continue the service. We all learned a lot from that. Highway Department, they don't schedule vacations in the wintertime. If they do and it's around a snowstorm, they end up canceling most of the time. So we started looking into a backup plan. And so right now we currently have two town employees that have plowing experience. One of them has already helped us this year, helped us last year also. So the, the way this would work is just to cover sick, if somebody's out sick, somebody's able to take a vacation. It's not an every storm type of deal. It could be if it's a long drawn out storm, somebody's just burnt out, they've had enough, we call those other people in, into help. I, I think it's something that's long overdue for it. I never looked at it that way, because once you get into the plowing, you're just kind of, you're there to, you're, you're there for the long run. The older we get, it's not as easy to recover from these things. You know, from the other night, we were 30 hours in the trucks for this past storm. So the, the, the way this would work between the two people, if you all approve of this, it kind of way that the police department does on details. One was the lowest hours, gets the first option on it. If they can do it, great, if they can't, then it'll go to the second individual. And if for whatever reason, if this doesn't work out or we want a bigger plan, there are contractors out there that would do it. Some of them want, if you put them on an on-call type thing, they're going to want to get paid whether they're working or not. Because if you've got them on the hook for a certain time, they're going to want to be guaranteed money. Can't guarantee a money, they're going to go elsewhere and they're not going to be available. I did talk to a, a contractor that is willing to be put on something like this with enough notice. They can juggle their work around and their people around and, and make that happen too and provide a truck. So I think we've got a couple of good options. It's set there, the current employees, it would be at their overtime rate if it's after their regular shift hours. If it's their regular shift hours, then it's their shift rate until you go into overtime, just like us. I don't think it needs to be a special rate for plowing. But that's up to all also, we don't get a special rate.
Would be a, it would be, I assume, if it's normal work hours, it would be a matter of what, what thing has the highest priority? Their regular job or this? Right, I was, I was just going to say, if it's regular work hours and they're current employees, it doesn't make sense to me that we would pull them from their regular duties to go plow just because they're on a backup list. So what I was going to suggest is if we have a list and it's, it's open to current employees to have the skillset to be able to do it, but we could also make that a four person list, if there's two other people that, you know, have the ability and, and capacity and want to do it as well, the list can be a little bit longer, you don't have to stop yourself at two.
Oh, absolutely, th- these are the two that I know in town that have, have the ability.
You know, I think last year we talked about Mr. Pollan had, or was willing to do it as a backup as well. So, you know, just having, or at the time.
Was, at the time, yes.
Was at the time. But the idea that maybe there's somebody else who says, I'm, I don't have a problem with, you know, I'm not doing anything in snowing and I can hop in a truck and do it too and make a few bucks. It just seems weird that we would pull somebody from their normal duties because it's snowing to go plow. When highways, you schedule around these storms, you understand they're coming, it's part of your responsibility. When highway is, you schedule around these storms. You understand they're coming, it's part of your responsibilities. Your winter workload is much different based on the fact that you have to plow and have to do clearing. Whereas theirs do not, they don't shift their priorities around snow, so it'd be a little less.
It depends on what it is.
Yeah.
And what role it is, what it is.
Correct.
But I assume, I assume meeting your concern would be Glenn with the department head and talking through that, if there's a need.
Done that.
Well, I know you've.
Yeah.
You, you've done that ahead of this discussion, but I just, in general, if it expands, whatever that looks like, whoever's on it, right? Good starting point.
Glenn, anyone, um, who's already working for the town, or not working for the town? You said you had two people on the list?
Yes, Ri- Ryan Bettors and, and David Lambert, that works, that does, uh, the building ground maintenance here, yes.
So it's existing, it is existing employees?
Yeah, it's, it's existing employees, but not hired out, it's, it's existing employees.
So, and that's, you know, so one of my concerns, I, I wasn't aware it was Ryan, but it, it, it does bring up the concern of you take somebody, we have a staffing plan to have enough fire protection staff on duty, snowstorms, if he's now saying, I'm gonna hop into a plow, and you just said 30 hours, we now don't have a firefighter for 30 hours while he's in a, in a truck.
No, the truck would park, he would go to the call. I mean, some of those discussions and plans.
It makes a little bit more, now after hours, you know, I can, per DM, hey, I can get you the next 12 hours, that's fine, you know, but after that, find somebody else. You can work those things out, but, um.
Yeah, and that was the understanding with Ryan, that if there was, if there was a fire call, that he, he would have to jump out of the truck and, and.
But I just don't know how that works with, uh, we talk about, you know, health and safety, uh, availability, burnout. You've got a, you know, somebody who on a, on a, in a plow truck for 20 hours, and then a fire call comes in, and then he's on a fire call for another 12 hours, 14 hours. I don't know how safe that is. It's just some of these things.
How safe any of it is.
Yeah.
Honestly, after 20 hours.
Right.
You know, 30 hours, but it's part of the job that, you know, that we have to do.
You just said it's not as easy. I think we also, I think everybody's learning, right, as management, in my opinion, that just because it was, doesn't mean it should.
Right.
And so how do we approach it differently and not assume 30 hours is what it should be? Instead, it costs more and we have to rotate, or we have more people, or whatever that looks like to do something safer, right? I think that's, at least in my mind, I, you know, I.
I'm not opposed to.
Thinking about that.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to a backup snow plowing list. I'm actually highly in favor of it. I think it should be a bigger list if we can get people on it, um, as a per DM on call. I don't know if there's a burning desire of people to be on a list like that, but so far, we've been looking at in-town only, I mean, we haven't advertised.
I don't think so.
We haven't advertised for it though. I mean, it hasn't been something that's been broadcast publicly that we're looking to hire somebody. It's not a, we haven't done any of that. So we've just done watercooler discussion with current employees. So we have no idea really what the.
You're thinking like a.
I'm thinking like.
Seasonal per DM, as we did.
Yeah, seasonal employee. I mean, there's people out there that used to work for, you know, just like Ryan, used to work for Mackin, was in a plow truck for, you know, 25 years, knows how to do it. Maybe there's somebody else that says, yeah, recently retired, I don't mind doing seasonal work, I pick up a few extra bucks, you know, I live close by.
So what are you saying?
Not me. You couldn't pay me enough. No, but that idea that I think if we, if we are to look at this, I think we're pigeonholing ourselves to say that we have to find somebody that's currently, uh, an employee of the town and add them to our on-call list. I think if we're gonna do a policy like this, we open it up to any and all available people that want to apply to be on this rotating list.
So then we go through a hiring process of pre-screening and a physical, and so we're gonna have to wait till next year for it then?
Oh, we can start it with this. I'm not saying it has to, but I'm saying it can evolve. It doesn't have to, um, you know, we have, we have applicants that could go on there.
Yeah.
And start now, and then we can increase it as we have the capacity to increase it.
Okay.
I'm not saying don't do it while we do that, but the idea that we would just limit it to people that we already have hired, that are current employees, I think you're just sort of creating another, uh, you're taking the burden off, burden off of one area and putting it on another. It's still a burden of hours and ability and staffing levels, while the highway then has the break of not having to worry about that. The other departments that they were working from now has a deficit in theirs. So either way, you have a deficit. You've carried that burden for years of the deficit of, you know, the ability and the manpower. Uh, I'm saying look outside to alleviate that from town employees, so that you can take your vacations. You don't have to be in a truck for 30 hours. There's ability to do that.
Okay.
It's a longer process to hire more people and to do that, but I think there's opportunity there to look at it.
Yeah, we certainly look into it.
Probably worth going back in a future meeting. I'm talking about, um, a third party too, who's willing to be potentially available with notice. And what does that need to be? How do we do, is there anything particular about how to procure it as another route, right? Doesn't hurt.
Good, can do that.
But we're generally okay with this as a starting point and.
As a starting point, we already have employees, they've already gone through screening, they're already there.
Something.
It's better than nothing.
Okay. Yep, we could work on a bigger picture. Any takers?
Baby steps. I wanna see Brian in a plow truck.
He's offered.
I offered last storm, he told me no.
He offered, and he's not on the list.
We saw your bumper on your truck.
He did respond that way in SNX.
Shit, smaller truck. That's what the plow part's for.
That's right.
Yeah. So other bumpers can look like that now.
Mailboxes.
But thank you for working on it.
Yeah, well, we'll continue to work on it. We'll, we'll make it better.
It's a good start. We had nothing.
Right.
Thank you. Good enough on that one for now? Okay.
Good?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
You as well.
What's left of it?
That depends on how ambitious we are. Um, I'm guessing we're not ambitious, and we'll hit the things we have to and call it a night, right? Cause we are well past our cutoff, yeah, I know, I wanted to.
Only mandatory things at this point.
Yeah, I didn't even wanna hit 10:30, but we're going to, unfortunately. We'll pass over the town hall feasibility, pass over the shared health inspection services, draft position, draft.
I was gonna say, we can't. That one we have to talk about, it's time sensitive. Sorry.
It's okay. It's why you're all here with me. And do it on my own. All right, I'll pass over a review of the request for qualification for town hall feasibility study. We'll pass over the FMLA draft, we'll pass over the personnel, proposed personnel bylaw draft, pass over the proposed personnel policy and procedure manual draft, pass over the proposed cemetery commission bylaw, pass over meeting minutes, December 5th. Pass over. Yeah.
The ninth and 10 commitments.
Not gonna pass over those.
No, gotta do those.
And that's, we have to do licenses, right?
Say we're running out of time.
Yeah, so, so that's the passover list. We'll stop there on the passover, okay?
Remote work policy, that's just the first read.
Yeah, I'm just gonna call it for a first read, so. Got it. Going back up to the things we do have to hit tonight before we finish. Discussion regarding shared health inspection services, review of the draft position, description and draft intermunicipal agreement.
I really just need you to consider approving the agreement. And if there's any glaring omissions or concerns about the draft, uh, job description, um, letting me know that. So the high level is that the boards of health for the respective towns have all met, worked on this, they did some, uh, wordsmithing on the agreement. So you saw those changes. The only change that has happened this morning that's not in your packet is literally the introductory sentence or two.
Yeah.
They just reworded it so grammatically it reads clearer. That's the change. Um, it doesn't change anything of substance. The reason that we're encouraging you all to consider adopting it is that the three boards of health met earlier today as the district, and they all agreed that it met what they were looking to achieve, and so the boards of health are ready to proceed. You're all scheduled to meet tonight, and the select boards of Chute, Chutesbury and Northfield are scheduled to meet tomorrow night. So assuming this gets through this week, it could all start soon.
The board of, board of health can't move forward without our approval.
Correct. Board of health has the authority to appoint the health agent, so once they know that the select boards of the three towns have agreed, we can proceed on that piece.
So this, this would put Irving as the host.
Yep.
Allowing everything to funnel through us, and then we allow.
So everything we would budget.
And then we would earmark it directly and go back. Yeah, 100%.
On an assessment.
Yep.
Correct.
Basis to the other towns.
And we will.
Cause it wouldn't be a district, right? It would be us as a host town, billing for shared services we're providing.
Correct.
Yep.
And when we, and when we go back to look at the budget, cause I'll have to go back and adjust the way that we traditionally budget for the board of health, we will, we will front end what in the past has been the district budget in our budget here.
And then expect receipts to, for the assessment amounts to ensure that ours is what it was.
So on your revenue projections that I'm gonna give you, when we calculate local receipts, I tend to be very conservative with, uh, the accountant on what our local receipts are. But I will increase it with these ones, because these will be contractually obligated.
Treat them as assessments that we guarantee to get.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm okay with it. Um, do you need a motion for that?
So I would just need a, a motion for you all to, uh, allow this to proceed, and if one of you can be the signatory on behalf of the board.
If you want, I can.
Are you gonna be there Wednesday, and, and that too? Would you mind, yeah, cause you're doing, you're doing the closing tip, so, especially if it's all done, it needs to be done.
Yeah. Yep, I gotta be at the town hall on Wednesday anyways.
That's what I was thinking, so, if they finish everything tomorrow.
And this agreement is drafted with a term ending right now of December 31st of 2025.
Correct, with a clause that we're, it's gonna be reevaluated by June 30th of 2023 for.
Correct. Cause I'm sure there's stuff that we've missed.
Future changes. So I will make a motion that we adopt the intermunicipal agreement, uh, IMA for local public health services between the towns of Northfield, Chutesbury and Irving, and have myself, Scott Bassrash as the signatory on the agreement.
With the term ending?
Uh, yes, term ending, you said December 31st, 2025.
Correct.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the, um, draft, uh, job description, good for now?
Yeah, there's been no changes since the last time we read it.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think the other towns have read it, and they haven't had any concerns with it.
Come back and give me a concern.
Okay. Do you wanna adopt it then? Do we, do you need it adopted tonight? It helps, it doesn't hurt? Okay, then we'll leave it draft, and we'll work on. So we continue this. Okay?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Review and issuance of the ninth and 10th water commitments for FY23. I'll make a motion that we approve the, sorry, my thing just got really big. The ninth water commitment for fiscal 23 in the amount of $175 and zero cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we approve the 10th water commitment of FY23 in the amount of $40 and zero cents for final charges at 17 Moore Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Review the remote work policy, first read, just a read, talk about it next meeting. Renewal initiation, issuance of the 2023 liquor licenses, retail package, innkeeper and pouring.
The packet got a little funky.
Uh, that's happened to me too. I keep scrolling and it's jumping and.
Well, no, it's just that one of the pages for your licenses is, uh, page two of the packet, instead of in with the other pages.
Oh, the other half of page one?
So if you scroll all the way to the top of your package, we have the agenda.
Oh, wait, yeah. Oh, no, 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 no. Sorry, no, it really is in the packet. That just got posted on the agenda. That's an open meeting lock.
Oh, okay.
To be transparent about who we're issuing licenses to, it's listed twice, sorry. And then they're broken up by the particular sections.
I'm sorry.
Where our packet is.
So if you go to section 18 and 19 in your packet.
Well, those, the, the maps in there are really messing with.
I, that's what I thought you were talking about, cause I'm having to shrink it and scroll it and.
Go past it, it drops it down to 25%.
Exactly.
I can't even read that 100%, so.
Uh, okay, so.
So everything's up to date, they've all met their requirements, paid their money. Everything's good to go.
Correct. So I'll make a motion, we issue a liquor license restaurant alcohol to the French King Boeing Center, 55 French King Highway, effective January 1, 23, expiring December 31, 23.
Second.
And.
Oh, you're gonna do them all?
If you don't mind.
Go for it.
And, uh, liquor license retail package store to Weatherheads at 63 French King Highway and Flish Market at 5 West Main Street, both effective January 1, 23, expiring December 31, 23. And a liquor license innkeeper to French King Motor Inn, 129 French King Highway, effective January 1, 23, expiring December 31, 23.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have.
There's one called out.
A renewal application for Franklin Grocery for a liquor license retail package store at 1 West High Street. This business is not currently in operation. And we had a similar situation in the past, and we initially renewed the license for, I believe, a month.
Right.
Looking for feedback from the business owner.
Right.
On plans, details, right? Cause we weren't gonna have an active license for an active business for any period.
Well, part of that.
They then withdrew their license.
Correct. I think part of that also is the assessing office was noting that they were being assessed as residential.
They discontinued the use of the space. It was a, um, multi-use building.
Oh, and they no longer had a commercial use, but had a commercial license.
They weren't being, uh, assessed and taxed at a commercial use. I don't know if that's the case here.
The space here, to my understanding, and, and I don't know the full plans, my understanding is it's marketed for lease as a commercial space, that there have been, uh, potential tenants that have explored maybe renting the space. And this has been going on for months. Uh, there's just no current tenant, and there's no current plan that's been communicated to our office for a business to actually establish itself there. So, um, we just made, um, spoke to the, the owner of the, the property who's seeking renewal of the license, just to say that typically, we haven't issued the license to a space if the business isn't functioning. And asked if there were more details to come, and so far, we haven't received details as to what the plan is.
One nuance to this is we have plenty of available restaurant alcohol licenses. This is our only, all of our retail licenses are currently.
Spoken for, we only have three.
So this would be freeing up a license, and it is the only license, so. There is that, I guess if you will, commercial piece of that, right, as a business, having a license can be really valuable in some towns. Maybe not necessarily the case here normally, but this is the only one, so there is a limit, and we are at that limit. So it has a different value potentially to the business owner, or the property owner, I guess, if you will.
Correct.
Than, than the one that we did discontinue.
Which had many.
Which had many.
More opportunities for other people to do it.
Right.
Uh, and I think if they're looking for, you know, leasing, to know that they have a secured license.
Right.
Makes sense. Uh, the reason I brought it up is, in the other one, the, the assessing and the taxing was different. It was straight up a residential property, and we were issuing a business license for a residence, not a business. Whereas this is still a commercial space, functioning as a commercial space, um, taxed at a commercial space. It just doesn't have a tenant in there right now.
Correct.
So it's a little bit different.
Absolutely. And the scarcity piece is the difference too.
Correct, so I, I would not, I wouldn't have a problem.
Do we wanna renew it endlessly without it being used? That, that's my question, I guess, from the other side. Is there a time limit on that? Do we let someone just keep it forever, not using it?
No, I mean, we do these annually, but, you know, um.
It's been inactive for most of a year already. And I'm not saying, I'm not proposing we don't extend it tonight, I'm just saying, do we extend it for a short amount of time? At least get some answers on what's the potential, I don't know.
We haven't had anybody else show any interest in it currently?
Nobody else knows it's available. It could be available.
Right, but, um.
True.
Nobody's inquired to say if we have any available or not.
No. No.
I mean, I would say extend it, even if we just did a half a year and, and work with the.
Revisit.
The owner to find out if, uh, you know, maybe in month five. If he knows, you know, does he need it extended for the rest of the year, does he have a tenant, you know, is it gonna be sold or whatever? Or is it just gonna go away and, you know, um, can we open it up for somebody else? But at least honoring the fact that they've had it and are looking to put a tenant in there and utilize that license, keep it going.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna discontinue it tonight either, some period of time to, to get that.
Agreed.
Six months you're proposing?
July.
June thirty?
June thirtieth.
Make a motion that we issue a liquor license, retail package store to Franklin Grocery, one West High Street, effective January one twenty-three, expiring June thirty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And just note that we can put it on our calendar for, you know, May.
And we can follow up to the inquiry about what's the plan.
Yeah.
Um, just to say we've extended it for six months, we understand what you're doing and if you expect to.
Utilize it.
Have a, a leasing that's gonna utilize it and if not, let us know so we can discontinue.
We will notify the business owner tomorrow.
The business license renewals? Uh, everyone is current and taxes and active and. Okay. Uh, I'll run through it again, um, make a motion, we issue a license for automatic amusement devices to French King Bowling Center, fifty-five French King Highway, effective January one twenty-three, expiring December thirty-one twenty-three. I'll do groups separate.
Sure, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll issue a common vic jeweler's license to.
Vittlers, I did it last year.
Vittlers?
Yes, I did it last year, it is, it is, I, I. I looked it up last year and I said, man, I said that nineteen different times last year.
I know, okay, vittlers, which is a weird word, um, I feed vittles to my dog, no, that's a whole nother one. Uh, make a motion, we issue a common vittler's license to Dunkin' Donuts, sixty-three French King Highway, Flish Market, five West Main Street, Freight House, eleven East Main Street, French King Bowling Center, fifty-five French King Highway, French King Motor Inn, hundred and twenty-nine French King Highway, French King Restaurant, one twenty-seven French King Highway, all effective January one twenty-three, expiring December thirty-one twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion, we issue auto repair license to Greenfield Automotive, thirty-eight French King Highway, a class one agent of vehicle manufacturer license to Tim's RV Incorporated, fifteen East Main Street, class two auto repair and retail to Roseledge Companies, twenty-one Poplar Mountain Road, Stoneville Auto, sixty-four East Main Street, Tim's RV Incorporated, fifteen East Main Street, Irving Equipment at thirty-French King Highway.
That one's different.
Thank you.
Vehicle retail.
Yep. So Irving Equipment, thirty-French King Highway is a class two used vehicle retail. And finally, uh, class three buy-sell vehicle parts to Roseledge Companies, twenty-one Poplar Mountain Road and Stoneville Auto, sixty-four East Main Street, all effective January one twenty-three, all expiring Jan-, uh, December thirty-first twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those licenses out tomorrow?
Excellent. Uh, last item is review of open meeting law complaint from Todd Wallach submitted on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two concerning the board's November seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting. So, um, Mr. Wallach, um, filed the complaint regarding our November seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting and in brief, alleged that we violated open meeting law as follows. The Irving Select Board went into executive session on November seventh, but did not list the topic of the executive session, either the agenda or the minutes of the meeting as required by open meeting law. The minutes and agenda show that the town believes the executive session was permitted by Mass General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A one, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual. However, the select board failed to identify the individual on the agenda and the minutes. It is also unclear whether the board gave the individual the opportunity to attend the meeting and/or open the meeting to the public. Your request, yeah, the complaint requests the following response from the board. Uh, the ask, uh, I ask that the select board amend the minutes and agenda to identify the topic of the executive session. So. Let me, um, one second. We have a copy of the draft and I'm reading from some of it, of the, um, draft response to this complaint in our packet.
The same thing.
Yeah, it's the same thing, yeah, it's exactly what you have, yeah, um. So, uh, the response notes the summary of the complaint that I just read and, uh, that we reviewed the complaint tonight. And that this is the response that we would provide, so this is the draft. Attorney General's, and, and I'm paraphrasing, but the content is here. Attorney General's Division of Open Government has previously determined that a public body may omit identifying information about an individual to be discussed in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A one, purpose one, if the body is concerned about protecting the privacy of the individual. In a determination regarding the North Attleboro Board of Selectmen, Open Meeting Law, twenty seventeen dash seventy-four, enclosed here. The Division of Open Government found that the board did not violate the open meeting law when it used the language of purpose one as the meeting notice topic and omitted the name of the individual to be discussed. And excerpt here, when discussing an individual public employee in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, uh, I'm sorry, to General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A one, a public body may omit identifying information about the employee from a meeting notice where the body is concerned about protecting the privacy of that individual. See OML twenty thirteen dash one forty-one. The town manager stated to our office that the board omitted identifying information about the individual under discussion because the board was concerned about protecting the privacy of that individual. Accordingly, we find that the meeting notice contains sufficient detail. That's an excerpt from OML twenty seventeen seventy-four, enclosed. With respect to the November twenty-seventh, uh, I'm sorry, November seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting, the board was concerned about protecting the privacy of the individual discussed and therefore the individual's name was omitted from the meeting notice and was not mentioned during the open session when the board voted to enter executive session pursuant to purpose one, as reflected in the minutes of the meeting. Meeting notice and minutes enclosed with this letter and prior provided. The individual discussed during the executive session was given the required forty-eight hour written notice with the opportunity to attend the executive session and the option to have the discussion in open session. Based on the foregoing, the board did not violate the open meeting law as alleged in your complaint. And, uh, in closing, that this written response, we believe, uh, has addressed the issues raised by the complaint and in compliance with the open meeting law and the Attorney General's regulations, the board submitted a copy of the, will submit a copy of the complaint to the Attorney General's Division of Open Government. And, uh, we would also forward a copy of this written response notifying them of the action that we took in response to the complaint from Mr. Wallach. So that is the draft, um, response that has been drafted, obviously, and, and recommended via our council with regards to said complaint. Any questions or concerns?
I have no concerns and do we need to make a motion to that or?
I think we should and, uh, yeah, I have no concerns, it details exactly what we did and why we did it.
So I'll make a motion that we, um, approve, um, the sending and the, um, we, uh, written, um, response to the open meeting law complaint filed on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two dated December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. I believe that, um, meets the requirements for that and closes that issue out at this time.
I'll take care of the rest of that.
Excellent. And with that, we will call the end of the meeting, make a motion to adjourn at ten forty-eight PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everyone, have a good night.